This meeting of the Margate Planning Board is called to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Clem Wozleski. Mike Richmond. Jim Galantino. Margaret Huber-Nulty.
Here.
Mike Cristaldi.
Here.
Craig Pomisano. David Carter. Despenahess.
Yes.
Remy Pelosi. Joe DiGorolamo.
Here.
Rich Patterson.
Here. This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets. I'd like to hear a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to hear approval of resolutions and decisions number 32, 2016, Frank and Cochetta Pagliuso. Number 33, 2016, Don and Amy Carlin. Number 34, 2016, C Grapes Property LLC. I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. First case is Keith Creed, 9108 Winchester Avenue, block 224.01, lot 91, in the S-25 District to grant C variances for front yard, side yard, rear yard setback, and possibly others. Taxes and order are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfying. Mr. McLarnan?
Roger D. McLarnan?
I do. Thank you, Board Chairman. Board members, my report is dated September 19th, 2016. Background, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the City of Margate in order to elevate an existing non-conforming structure more than three feet allowed by state statute without variance relief. C variances are requested in this application to allow for vertical expansion of existing non-conforming bulk requirements. The variances requested are rear yard setback, whereas 14 feet where 20% of lot depth is required and 5.8 feet exist and is proposed for the principal structure. Rear yard setback, whereas 14 feet for the proposed deck, same as a rear yard setback for the principal structure. Side yard setback, whereas eight feet minimum is required and 5.9 feet exists and is proposed. The fourth and final variance requested is landscape area total, whereas 35% of the lot is required to be landscaped and less than that is existing. A further reduction is being proposed. My comments are, the single family dwelling is proposed to be elevated more than BFE plus three feet to allow for a garage to be constructed below the elevated first floor. State statute allows houses or structures that are non-conforming to be elevated to plus three above BFE, but they're going further than that, triggering the variances. The variances need to be justified. The address should be corrected on a variance plan to read 9108 Winchester. That's a minor detail. The testimony, we should hear the testimony to justify the variances.
Hello?
Yes, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is James Swift. My office is 1335 Hilton Road, Northfield, New Jersey. I'm appearing tonight in behalf of Keith Creed in reference to the property at 9108 Winchester Avenue. With us here tonight is the property owner, Mr. Creed, as well as our architect, Dan Masione, and our planner, Rami Nasser. Bottom line, this is not a complicated application, and I don't intend to make it complicated, but it is important to Mr. Creed. He has lived in this property, well, his family has lived in this property for greater than 60 years. The last time any significant modifications or alterations to the property were made was approximately 1975. So the property at this point in time is somewhat dated. As you can imagine, during the Sandy storm, the property got beaten up pretty badly. So a significant part of the decision to make these modifications, and hopefully the board will think favorably upon it, is as a result of the damage that was done to Sandy. As the board will see from the plans, in essence, the property right now starts on the first floor, and what we'd like to do, in essence, make the first floor sort of our hurricane-proof floor, and the major part of the living space will be on the second floor, and then, of course, the third floor. The good part of this, a very good part of this application is that, as the board is aware, Winchester Avenue at this point in the city is a very, very heavily traveled area because you have a lot of the public works, the police department, the various different city functions, which are right around the corner from the property. So accordingly, any sort of parking is at a premium. Presently, the property only has one off-street parking space, and what we're proposing to do is basically put in a garage on the first floor, which would also be part of our hurricane-proof first floor. So Mr. Creed will be able to pull a car into the garage, one car in the garage, the other in the driveway. So in essence, the property is presently not compliant in terms of parking. What we're trying to do is make this property, at least parking, compliant. I think what it does, it takes into consideration the fact that there's a likelihood that another storm is probably going to come by at some point, hopefully in the not-too-distant future. This property, if the board approves the plans as proposed, is going to be much better prepared to deal with any kind of a hurricane-sandy situation. So the board will permit me, what I'd like to do at this point, is call up Mr. Nasser, who can explain the site plan, and then after him, we have our architect, Mr. Masione. So if I can be permitted, can I call? Come on, Rami.
Jackie Osborn.
Okay. This is Rami Nasser. This is our planner.
David Carter.
Rami Nasser.
And so, A.
Our first name, R.A.M.I.
Is there anything to add, please?
Yes, I do.
Can you explain, let's say, the technical details of your site plan?
Yes. Too loud, too loud. As you see, that on the left side of the property, the house currently sits closer than the existing setback. And to the rear, the same thing, we have 5.8 feet, and that also does not comply with the 14. What we chose to do is, when we raise the house, if you comply with the requirements, you go up to elevation 13. If we go an extra two feet, they will be able to have a parking or a garage and an extra storage space under the house. So we elected to go the additional extra couple of feet to achieve that. That will give us two parking spaces on site. And by doing this, also, we would like to build a deck that will be like ground, a second-floor deck, basically, which means when they want to enjoy the house, go outside and have a barbecue, they can just step one step and go to the deck and use it. Otherwise, if we don't propose a deck, they have to go down about 14 steps, which is kind of defeat the purpose. Currently, they have three steps. They can down, they can barbecue, they can enjoy the backyard. But when you raise the house, they won't be able to do that without having steps.
Does the deck exist now?
Yeah, it's a patio.
So you're just going to, in the same spot, you're going to raise it up to the first-floor level?
Yes, basically. Actually, it's smaller.
Okay.
Currently, the patio is, you have concrete all the way around the house and pavers. So what we did is, we took the back of the house, we went straight to the back of the house, and we exceeded the right side of the house by three-plus feet to be able to have steps. So basically, you'll have a deck, and then you'll have a step to come down to the backyard. Otherwise, you will kill the area by having a deck to be able, landing to come out of the house, put the steps. Now you've killed the whole area. So this will allow him to enjoy the backyard, because especially across the street from the front, he can have a view, and it's very loud and noisy. Yes.
May I ask you just a couple of questions? Mr. Nasser, you're obviously very familiar with this part of Winchester Avenue, Margate. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
And, you know, the city has a significant base of operations in terms of the public works, the police department, various other services that the city provides based in this general area.
Yes, yes, very busy street.
And would it be your professional opinion, as a planner, that the fact that we are taking a property which is presently non-compliant in terms of parking, and we're making it compliant, we're taking, we're doubling the parking, in your professional opinion, is that a major advantage of this particular design to the property?
Yes, that's actually meet the positive criteria. Especially by raising the house, we're not violating any existing setbacks. The building height is in accordance with the requirements, so it's a positive.
And you're familiar with the purposes of the New Jersey Land Use Act. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
Would it be your professional opinion that this design versus the old design advances the purposes of the Land Use Act?
Yes, especially this design in accordance with the Land Use Law, and I'll read it out from the book.
Jim, we can't hear Mr. Nasser.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We are securing the safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural and man-made disaster. Raising the house ensures that this house would never get flooded again, and if it's flooded, the living space, the habitable space would not flood.
And obviously, this is an older building, this is dated in style, and are you going to bring this up to, let's say, more modern-day design standards?
Yes, and as you see, the architectural plan reflects that.
Do you see any negatives?
No, sir.
All right. Would it be your professional opinion, and again, that the positive outweighs the negative?
Yes.
And do you see any substantial or any detriment to the public good?
No, sir.
All right. And Mr. Solicitor, I don't think I put Mr. Nasser's qualifications on the record. Do we stipulate to that?
Yeah, you just ask him if he's licensed in the state of New Jersey.
All right. If you could put your professional qualifications on the record.
Licensed in the state of New Jersey as a planner and as an engineer.
All right. If, Mr. Solicitor, could I offer Mr. Nasser up as an expert?
Yes, I'd recommend that. I think the chairman will agree.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we're covered there. Anything else? All right. Our next expert in this review.
Jim, it was just confusing the way you talked about the first floor being flood-proof. You don't have any living area on the first floor underneath. Okay.
No, basically, the design of the first floor is assuming if a flood comes back that...
It's just the garage and access and storage.
And your storage is going to get wrecked, as opposed to your washers and dryer and so forth.
And you also mentioned that there's going to be less landscaping. How much less landscaping will there be?
Actually, the open space we have is 34.8%. So if I get an extra 10 square feet, I'll be in compliance with the requirements, which we are going to. So there is no need for the variance as specified.
Okay. I'm in agreement with that, yes.
Does the board have any questions? Mr. Nasser?
I have a question. The air conditioning units on the side that's less than six feet.
Yes.
Are they existing?
No, I think the architect was going to address that.
Is there any way we can put those on the other side, so you don't need a variance for that?
I can address.
Yeah, I'm sure that's not an issue with...
He needs to be sworn in.
Daniel Scott Masione.
Do you want me to start with the air...
Credentials.
My credentials. Do you want to do credentials?
If you could, I'm sorry. Mr. McLarnan, before we go to your question, could we have Mr. Masione put his credentials on the record?
Sure, absolutely. I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey.
I'd like to offer Mr. Masione up as an expert.
He's testified before. Before we have words up.
Regarding the air conditioning, that was kind of a conscious decision that we can discuss. The reason why we did place it on that side, we were trying to maintain some more open space on the other side. We also use that design, it doubles as the covered entry to the door. That side door and the adjacency, if you can notice on, referring to Z1, there's a garage in that little alley, so it's backing up to the neighbor's garage, which I don't believe will provide any kind of nuisance or anything else to the neighborhood. So it may be the best place, in our opinion, it was the best place to place the air conditioning, rather than placing it in the open area where it can be seen, it's, you know, it's going to take up more open space, more green area, and even though it's hanging from the building, it'll be a little less aesthetically pleasing. So that was the reason we just, you know, we proposed it on that side.
So are you going to request a variance for that location?
I believe that that's required, yes, because that's the existing, that's the existing side. It was our intention to request a variance. That's the existing side that's already non-conforming, so we're requesting a variance on that side.
Okay.
It's open for discussion on that. I just reiterate what Rami, Mr. Nasser said, lifting this building, I believe the positive criteria to this is we do achieve creating another parking space. The rear deck, which we are providing, gives the living space some more open air. It does not affect the neighbors in open air space, and providing stairs on the side is the best use of the area to really try to preserve, referring to my drawing, Z1, the open space that is existing on the building that's closer to the public way. The private, more private space that we created in the deck is very functional, being in that rear yard setback, and it's just a function of lifting that patio up, the existing space they've used as public, means private space, and make it adjacent to the living space.
So with the, excuse me, with the unit, what side is that going to be on? Because I can't, I didn't...
The, I'm sorry.
It's the left side when you're facing the property.
The unit, the...
Yes. And what's the setback for that?
The mechanical units. The mechanical units were placed on the left side. There's a 5.9 existing, and approximately be three feet.
Three feet?
The setback would be a 2.9.
2.9, all right.
Would that be simply limited for the units?
Yes, yes.
Is that right?
Would that variance be simply limited to the HVAC units?
Yes. Sorry, yes, it would. I believe one of the comments in the technical review was also that we'd need to screen those units, so we would provide a lattice around those units, so that, you know, visually screened. But again, because of the site-specific nature of this, in general, we wouldn't put it in the short side, but that is almost aesthetically like an alley between the buildings, and it's, the neighbor's garage is a masonary garage right on the property line. So we thought it might be best to, or it is best to provide the units there.
And you have no problem with the conditions of the tree landscaping and the grass strip and all that, the conditions that were in Roger's report?
Well, I think they withdrew the landscape.
Yeah, the landscaping, we can meet the 35%. We were just...
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the grass strip out front, the shrubbery requirements, the two trees along the curb.
No objection, Mr. Chairman. I have a few more questions for Mr. Masione, very briefly. Dan, let me ask you this. In your professional opinion, as an architect, would you submit to the board that this plan versus the former building advances the purposes of the Land Use Act?
I would.
Do you see any negative impact?
I don't. I believe it's the best, design's best use of the space on this lot.
And this would meet modern-day design expectations?
Yes.
And obviously, it would provide a more attractive streetscape?
I believe it'd be much more aesthetic.
And the two parking spaces as proposed versus the one, would you say that's a significant contribution to the safety in this area and, obviously, the parking congestion?
I do. I believe Winchester Avenue, because of the traffic, right now, it's going to be a great benefit for neighbors.
And would you submit to the board that, in your professional opinion, the positives of this proposed application outweigh the negatives?
I do.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Masione, unless the board has something further, I don't have anything more to present. Come on.
Dan, it appears that there's no additional living space on either of the upper two levels. Is that correct?
There is not, no. So I just wanted to make sure that, yes. We're basically just lifting that ground floor that had been converted years ago, that was a living space up story to provide the garage.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
We've been having problems with people lifting their houses, that they're not putting the finish on the block foundations, and I see you have a stucco finish here, but we will hold you to that.
It's like technical condition, correct?
Well, it's on the plans, so, but it...
We would intend for the aesthetic...
I understand that, but I could take you around town and see people that haven't done it, so I just wanted to verbalize it so it's on the record.
Board have any further?
You done?
Basically, I'm going to ask respectfully if the board could give us any favorable consideration. Obviously, we would greatly appreciate it. I would submit to the board that this proposed application is going to significantly upgrade the site where it is, and any favorable consideration, obviously, would be appreciated. Thank you for your time and attention.
Is there anyone for the public that would like to speak on this matter? Public portion is closed. Any other comments or questions from the board? Stan, would you read the motion with the conditions?
The motion is in the affirmative to grant C variances for side yard setback requirements eight feet. As amended tonight because of the HVAC, it will be 2.9 feet. Rear yard setback requirement 14 feet 10 inches, proposed 5.8 feet. The landscape variance has been withdrawn. They're going to comply with the 35%. The conditions are all the conditions and comments set forth in Mr. McLarnan's report, including the grass strip, trees, and other items placed on the record. Also, the HVAC will have wrap and screening around the units, and there will be also a stucco finish on the raised portion from grade to the first floor. So be a motion, affirmative for those variances with conditions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
This actually is pretty simple to me. It's an older home, lower to the ground, in a flood zone that really needs some TLC and upgrading. I think your plan is nice. It has all positive aspects. You're not expanding, putting a third floor. You're keeping the actual use of the house the way it is, and basically, we're just granting variances because the existing house is non-conforming. I think this will be welcomed by the neighbors. I think it'll be an improvement to the neighborhood. You're providing parking. I see no negatives, all positives. I vote yes.
Thank you.
Clem Wozleski.
This is another Sandy-generated application. There's no increase in enclosed living area. The major variances are caused by having to raise the access into the building, both front and rear. I think the positives far outweigh any negatives. I vote to approve.
Jim Galantino.
The two, I think the two conditions were parking and the flood, and I agree, they do outweigh the negatives, and I think Mr. Fred Creed would appreciate his house going up in the air. I remember him sitting out in Porch 100 years ago, and I think this is a positive for the community. I vote yes.
Margaret Huber-Nulty.
The, it certainly is an aesthetic improvement to the neighborhood. I am happy to see another flood-compliant house and additional parking. I don't see any detriment to the neighbor, and I vote in favor of the application.
Thank you.
Mike Cristaldi.
We got another Sandy victim here. I'm sure they didn't want to do this, but forced into it. I don't see any negatives to the neighborhood for it, and commend the architect on putting the units seven feet in the air so you at least farming can move underneath it because you're in a restricted area. I'd vote yes on it.
Despenahess.
I believe that the positives here outweigh any potential negative impacts. Any negative neighbor impact would have controlled for me, quite frankly, in this situation, but having heard none, again, all the positives outweigh no known negatives. I vote in favor of all of the variances requested.
Thank you.
Rich Patterson.
I would only repeat what Clem and Jim said. I approve the application.
Thank you very much.
The application passes seven to nothing. Jim, would you come sign, please?
Yep, sure. Thank you very much.
Next case is Gail Saline, 8004 Bay Shore Drive, block 1200, lot 21, in the S-60 District to grant a C variance for bulk to allow an additional two-foot of root, two feet of root height at the peak only to raise a low ceiling height and possibly others. Taxes and order are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfying. Mr. McLarnan?
Thank you, Board Chairman. Board members, my report is dated September 19th, 2016, revised September 21st, 2016. Background, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the City of Margate to elevate a portion of a newly constructed half-story third-floor roof for aesthetic purposes and practical purposes. A C variance is required. Currently, the roof structure to comply with height and roof pitch requirements has a series of small gable roofs to achieve the ceiling height. The applicant seeks a height variance to continue a few of the smaller roofs into larger roofs instead of flattening them now and requiring another variance for a flat roof. This would decrease the number of vaulted areas within the third-floor area. The dwelling is in the process of being elevated to comply with current elevations. The structure is also expanded. Variance is required, a height variance, which qualifies as a C variance because it's less than 10% or 10 feet, whereas 28 feet above BFE, preliminary firm or ABFE, is required, and 29.8 feet is proposed, less than two feet. Comments? A variance is being requested to allow a small portion of the roof to exceed the maximum allowed by city code. A C variance versus a D variance due to height less than 10 feet or 10%, as I previously mentioned. The applicant was requested despite ASBIL survey, and this has not been accomplished unless the applicant testifies that the variance plan submitted utilizes ASBIL data. Rear yard site plan provided by J.E. Rosenkrantz differs from rear yard plan provided by Harry Harper. This should be clarified during testimony to get on record. Applicant needs to clarify all elevations proposed in ASBIL. Revised drawings will be required for zoning approval based upon testimony tonight. Plan shows stormy discharge into the open water draining ground-level areas per NJDEP regulations, only roof runoff may be discharged directly into the open area, open water. Please clarify this. Recommendations, I added the section E, rear yard site plan needs to be clarified which one is to be used. One complies with the ordinance, the other version, Harry Harper's, does not. Additional variances may be required. Testimony on clarify everything requested and shown tonight.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Steve Henkin, and I represent the applicant. I'd like to plumbarily, excuse me, like to plumbarily mark some exhibits, if I may. Okay? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.[1722.83]
For purposes of the record, there's four exhibits thus far. A1 is a photograph taken by yours truly of the interior of the third floor showing the beam in the center of the room, which is seven feet from the floor, and the reason for the application in question. A2 is the, and there'll be testimony on this, is the actual present condition of the, it's an architectural, what is proposed. A3 is a color rendering of the same. And A4 is, what we kind of, A3 is the photo, and A4 is the site plan. And for purposes of the record, there was some question raised by the zoning officer about the rear yard, and there will be total rear yard compliance with Rosenkrantz's application, his plan. The coverage will be limited to precisely what the city allows. There's no variance sought as to that whatsoever. And there will be testimony as to the ASBIL present condition as well, as Roger pointed out. Okay, let me say this. It's been a while since I've been here, and I'm sorry to take your time up with this tonight because I think it's a very de minimis application. I really do. Here's what's being sought. And it's an opposed application, by the way. The council was a real professional today. Mr. Fasendi, he called me this morning, gave me a heads up that he was representing the opposition, which is Mr. David Weiss, one of the next-door neighbors. And I appreciated that very much, that he let me know that. In any event, the variance sought, what are we seeking? Okay? We are seeking no more than a 24-inch height variance for 5% of the roof, not of the entire roof, 5%, no more. It converts what presently are four peaks into two, and the reason being, A1 before you, and you'll hear that testimony very briefly from the architect, Harry Harper, you're going to hear it straight. There were no mistakes. There was a misunderstanding by the applicant. When they walked in the room, and they saw the center beam, and they saw that instead of a peak, they had a beam seven feet high in the middle of their bedroom, it concerned them. And so what they've done is they've sought this variance application. As you can see, and I'm sure knowing the board as I do, and I know a lot of the members, you have visited the site, and you can see the de minimis effect of this. It can only actually be seen from the bayside. It can't even be noticed from the street. Again, that's the variance being sought. There are no other variance being sought whatsoever. The reason and the purpose is the seven-foot-high beam. And I said, as you'll hear testimony tonight, that the reason being the misunderstanding by the owner. And that's an honest reason. It always reminds me, when I say honest, of one of my clients one time that testified, and he said, "Your Honor, I swear to God, the 70% of what I just said is the truth." But tonight, 100% is the truth. I didn't get a laugh on that. I thought I'd be getting a laugh on that. That happens to be a true story. In any event, I want you to know that there is a potential alternative. We're not coming in here stiff. The potential alternative that was considered, and we will lay it before the board again this evening, as I did today to the objectors' council, is we would have a flat roof instead of going up to 24 inches in this renovated home. This is not a new home. This is a lifted renovated home to comply with FEMA and Margate's ordinances. We would have it flat.
Would that flat roof eliminate that pole in the middle of the closet?
It would. And it would, it would. We could have it go up, and it could be flat, but we need a pitch variance. So we thought architecturally, okay, aesthetically, it would be better to have the pitch than the flat roof. I know how Margate is about flat roofs. And we thought long and hard about it. Either way, we'd need to come in here, but I want the board to know that's a viable alternative. We're willing to do it. And why are we willing to do it? Because the root of the problem is the seven-foot beam. That's the problem. So any way we can solve it, we want to solve it.
Steve, you said it was a misunderstanding with the client. Did they know there was a pole in the middle of their closet?
They did not. They did. That's what happened. After, well, first of all, it was a, there was a four-foot-six knee wall. That was originally four, two peaks originally. And they walked in, and they saw that it had a four-foot-six knee wall, which was, it's not anything you want to live with. And the plan was then changed to four peaks, but they didn't realize. Now, that's not an architectural blunder. I'm not going to sit here and blame anyone else. There really is no blame. It's difficult to read plans for layment. And they walked in, the Salines, and, by the way, these are two brothers-in-law who live, share this. They've owned this home since 2003, the family. And that's what happened. A lot of times you have to see things to understand. They walked in, and they went, "Oh, my God, what is this?" So we considered the alternative, they did, and we considered after a good amount of thought, that the better way to go about it was to seek the peak, the 24 inches were, again, what amounts to only 5% of the roof, which can only really be seen from the bay. The witnesses tonight are going to be brief, but it's going to be John Barnhart. He's going to testify as to the overall benefits of the plan. And as you hear the testimony, I'm going to ask you to consider the following. The fact that this, there are constraints because this is a renovated home, and it was, there's a, there's a benefit involved, a substantial benefit, because it was raised to comply with FEMA standards. And that's an overall benefit. And when, and as I, there's a case in New Jersey which says, it's the Pullen case and the Pellet Division case, which says, listen, when boards consider whether the benefits outweigh the detriments, they don't have to consider whether the variance requested itself is a benefit. They consider the overall benefits of the project. And in doing that, I hope you'll consider the flood protection, which is a purpose of zoning under the municipal land use law. I hope you'll consider the lot size. It's a third bigger than it needs to be, this lot. The lot needs to only be 6,000 square feet. It's 9,261 square feet. The lot width is 15 feet more than it need be. There's a front porch setback of almost 26 feet. It only needs to be five. The front building is setback more than it needs to be, and coverage is 10% under what it needs to be, and there's an excess amount of parking. So that, and you'll hear this from John, that Barnhart. And so when you listen to the testimony and consider what we're asking for, which really is an alleviation of a, of a problem in a bedroom. It's a problem. I hope you'll consider the overall benefits. And John will also testify as to the lack of any negative impact to anybody. I know you've visited the site. Consider what impact you'll see, and you'll determine for yourselves whether this interferes with air lighter views. It doesn't, especially to, especially to everybody, no one, including Mr. Weiss. Harry Harper is going to come forward, and he's going to testify as to what happened. And so in that context, we're going to go forward. I'm going to ask, and by the way, for the record, I am representing as well Dr. Delisoto and Phyllis Delisoto, who have asked me to place on the record, not only my representation of them, they're the next-door neighbors across the street. They're total supporter of this project. They've authorized me to say that.
Where do they live?
Across, right on Bay Shore Drive, across the street. Two houses to the right across the street. You can see that on the tax map, which I have. And so I just hope that you'll consider the context of this application and say to yourselves, as I have, in scratching my head respectfully, because everybody has a right to object or to support. What is, what is the real reason for the objection? John, would you be sworn?
I do.
Okay, John. I'd like to stipulate his qualifications as a engineered license engineer. For the record, licensed engineer, his license land use plan is stated in church. Who's here?
Every heating.
Stipulate an objection.
The board, the board stipulates to that, Mr. Henkin.
Thank you.
John, please explain the nature of what was here and what has been said.
I'm going to speak first from Exhibit A3. To the left on the plan, you'll see the prior conditions of the dwelling. We had a dwelling that sat on this property. There was a relatively low elevation. You can see the front, the front door right in this, this top-left photo. Existing elevation of that, of that floor structure was, I think, approximately nine, or actually a little bit less than nine, which is, as we know, well below FEMA standards. You can see the rear of the home, same thing. Actually, the rear yard was almost, almost flush, the grade was almost flush with the finished floor in some areas. Our client went forward with a, with a house-raising applicant, or house-raising project, together with a renovation and expansion, like many people in the, in the community have. And when they submitted their application originally, they were able to develop a design that didn't require any variances. They went, moved forward, and they got their building permits, and they started construction. And they are essentially where we see the photos to the right is where we, where the project essentially sits today. You can see the front of the home has been elevated. You can see the number of stairs up to the new main entrance. You can see that the structure's been expanded at the upper level. You can see it's a dramatically different roof line, a dramatically different-looking appearance to a structure that's been brought into current day among a number of, as we know, absolutely magnificent homes along the Bay Shore Drive area. What they've set out to do is to take this project, or this property, into consistency with the Bay Shore Drive area. To the top right is, as I mentioned, is the front elevation, and then to the, to the bottom right is the rear elevation of the home, which is really the subject of the entire discussion this evening. As I mentioned, they went, they moved forward without the need for any variances. As I understand it, they had a number of different scenarios for the, for the partial third-floor expansion on the rear of the home. There was an original design by Mr. Harper, as I understand it, and then there were some modifications made to, again, make certain that they were in compliance with regard to height. And they went so far as, to build the structure in the rear with four little peaks. If you, if you visited the property, actually, the best view is to see it from across the lagoon, but if you visited the property, you saw the four little peaks. And as was explained to me, and I was in the room myself as well, once, once that framing was complete, they entered the room and were extremely disappointed with what they were dealing with. They have two bedrooms upstairs that have a center beam right down the middle of the room, and Mr. Harper can go into the architectural detail of, of the structure itself. But they have two center beams that go down the middle of each of the bedrooms, which I think at their greatest point are approximately seven feet, and it, they were just extremely disappointed with how that came out. It's, it's, it's a very odd look. You walk in the room, you expect to see the highest point of the ceiling at the center of a bedroom. This is actually quite contrary, it's the opposite of that. And because it's the center beam...
It's like an upside-down cathedral ceiling. Is that what it is?
That's exactly what it is.
That's what A1 mentioned.
That's exactly what it is. So if you, if you, the beds will essentially be centered in the rooms against the wall. That beam would be essentially above the bed at that, at that low elevation. It's, and it's something that was interesting to me because I measured it myself to see what the height difference was. And again, this is just from framing. There's no finishes in there right now. And it was approximately, it'll end up probably finishing out at approximately seven feet. What's interesting to me is when you walk into the room, even though it is seven feet, because it's in the center of the room, you actually feel like you're going to hit your head on it as you're walking toward it because it's just, it's just in very unusual condition. So obviously, the owners were not happy with it. So that's why we're here tonight, and you can see how important this is to them because they've built this. They've gone to the expense of building it like this. And now they're, now they've decided to stop, come in for the, come in for the approval to do it with what they think architecturally makes the building look better, and then obviously works better for them. And that's, that's why we're here tonight, is for that one specific topic.
John, as the zoning officer pointed out, we need the testimony to verify that the exhibit you have is A3.
This is A3.
Is that actually?
These are the physical conditions at the property right now. Yeah, I think, yep. I think what Roger's one question is, we did, we did have the opportunity to shoot the finished floor, and the finished floor shot, or elevation ended up being where we shot it on the, the existing rough finishes was at 11.34. So that's, that's the existing floor elevation as it sits today.
Let me ask you this question, John. Suppose they had elected to demolish the house and build a new. Would you be here today?
What's interesting is everybody's, this board is very familiar with this. We've dealt with this on many, many applications. New structures in, in the city of Margate are, are looked at based on both the preliminary firm and the ABFE maps. And it's been the direction of the town that the requirement is to build to the more conservative elevation when you're building a new home. In this specific case, this property would fall in a V-zone, which would have a base foot elevation of 12. And as I mentioned, this town has required an elevation of one foot above the ABFE map, which would require the floor for, if you were to build a new home on this lot, or the next-door neighbor's lot, or a number of lots along, along Bay Shore Drive, the finished floor requirement would be 13. You'd be permitted to build 28 feet of building above that elevation 13, based on your current, your standards and requirements, which puts the peak of your roof permitted at elevation 41, 28 feet above 13, 28 plus 13, 41. What we're requesting this evening is to fill in those two peaks, not really fill in, but remove those two valleys, and extend those two roof lines up. And as I mentioned, the architect will get into that in greater detail if, especially for those questions. And where those peaks end up is at elevation 40.8. So we have a building floor that's at 11.34. So we have a total dimension of our building floor up to where those peaks are proposed that's in excess of the 28 feet. But the actual peak height, as we propose it with this application, is 40.8 feet. So if our client tore the house down, he gets to build a house at 13 plus 28. He gets to go to 41 feet. He's only asking for 40.8 with this application. So, and that goes to the negative criteria, which I'll get into when we get into the specific justifications of the variance. But I think it's important to put this into context because, and I think what Mr. McLaren's report mentions it, it's almost a question of is a variance necessary? Well, I would say from a planning perspective, a variance is necessary because the ordinance says 28 feet above finished floor, and we are greater than that. So a variance is necessary here. But I think that, I think the heart of justification is, a building could be built with its entire roof ridge for the width of this, width of the property, obviously meeting setbacks, at an elevation of 41 feet. We're proposing to be 40.8 for 5% of the roof area. So Mr. Henkin brought, or made a statement in the very beginning that we think this is the de minimis application. From a planning perspective, this is about as de minimis as it gets, in my opinion. So let's talk for a second about what the justifications are, what the benefits to an application like this are. This is a home elevation project. So you obviously are, you're constrained by what you're dealing with, with the existing floor heights, with the existing structure. So you're, you've got a lot to deal with in trying to renovate and elevate a property like this. But what the benefits that this, that going in this direction, rather than tearing down and building a new home, that, as I mentioned, would be permitted at elevation 41...
For the record, the witness is now referring to seven...
Yes, which has been labeled Exhibit A4. So the benefits of, of this project, as, as compared to having built a new home on the structure, on the property is, first of all, this building, as it's, as it's proposed and as it's now built, is approximately 30% building coverage. So it's 10% below what would be permitted on the lot. So it's a dramatically smaller building structure than what this lot would actually be permitted. And this board is aware, 99% of the projects that come in here are right at the max of building coverage. So I think that's an important key, that in the renovation project, they've given up on the ability to expand that footprint. They've expanded, they've put a garage in the front, but they're still well below the requirement.
Back to 10% of the amount, is that correct?
Correct. Secondarily, and I think this is extremely important, although we're asking for some height deviations in the two back corners, two back walls of the building, we have not gone, we have not done anything with regard to the rear yard setbacks. We are preserving the existing rear yard setback. I believe the permitted setback to the bulkhead is 10 feet at this location. We have a rear yard setback of 36.1 feet. So we've preserved that entire openness in the rear yard.
John?
Yes?
For the record... Would you talk into the microphone, too, when you're talking?
For the record, I'm also referring to the identical exhibit. And I'm asking Mr. Barnhart, is there anything under Margate zoning that would preclude the expansion of the home in a, in an easterly direction, I should say southerly direction, which would in fact block the view of Mr. Weiss, who was here? Is there anything that would preclude that?
So long as you meet setbacks in building coverage, no.
Well, you could, you could do it.
Correct.
But that's not a possible application, correct?
No, that's correct. And Mr. Henkin pointed out, another benefit of this project is we are proposing to meet all the landscape and all the coverage requirements that the land use ordinance requires for a site at this location. a site at this location. So we truly believe that in the direction that they've headed, although they are asking for the one deviation, we truly believe that the benefits of this home elevation and renovation project, and what it actually protected insofar as views and building coverage and those things that I've already mentioned, substantially outweigh the potential negative impact of the additional roof height for the two, those two peaks to the rear of the structure. With regard to the positive criteria, when you look at the requirements of municipal land use law, although this is not a use variance, it's a C variance, we believe there are two specific purposes of zoning in the municipal land use law that are advanced with the application. The first being that the applicant, the application provides a desirable visual environment through creative design techniques. You saw the photographs, I think it's without question or argument, where the building was to where it is today is a dramatic improvement and really fits the character and the scape of Bay Shore Drive.
Let's go to Mr. Wash West and sign the original home.
When I say improvement, it's, you know, it was an older home that's been brought into more current day design standards, but Mr. Harper can talk to those topics when he gets up. We're talking about a desirable visual environment. But as part of that desirable visual environment, as I've already stated, we've preserved those rear yard views, which when you're on a bayfront or lagoon front property, that is paramount. And we have kept that 36-foot rear yard setback, which is, we think, very, very important. The second purpose of zoning that we think is advanced with the application is protection from flood, fire, or other natural or may have made disasters. This is a case where it is a home elevation project. We are now, the building floor is now over two feet above the preliminary firm base foot elevation at 11.34 as I mentioned. So this building has been taken out of harm's way from where it sat prior to the construction of the project. And although that doesn't actually go directly to the height that we're requesting, it just shows another dramatic benefit to this project that again, as I mentioned, we believe outweighed the potential negative impact.
John, how about the hardship aspect in the context of this is an already disstrukted home renovated, and the difficulty of a 4'6" wall just blocking...
Well, as a planner, from a planning perspective, I don't think I can call this a hardship. But there are some practical difficulties, I'll say, with developing the partial third-story for Mr. Harper's team to create the framing that works and still gets the roof line to look the way they want it to look, and to get the ceiling heights that they're looking for. There are some practical difficulties with that, whereas if he started from a blank slate, he can get that half-story in fairly simply, and you've seen that of application after application where the half-story works just fine. So it's not a hardship in the sense of a variance, but there are some constraints from a technical standpoint that makes it difficult for him.
And that still falls within a C1 variance criteria, does it not, by difficulty?
Yeah, a practical difficulty is part of a C1 variance, yeah. So with regard to the negative criteria and the justification of a variance, there's two prongs to it, as we know, and that is, is there a substantial detriment to the public good?
And in that regard, go ahead.
The key to that being, is there a substantial detriment to the public good? Well, what I would say to you is, in this specific case, you know, who does this affect? It affects our neighbors, if it affects anybody. What we have is, we have two areas of the building that are set almost 30 feet from the side property lines. They are, as Mr. Harper's exhibit will show, they are 5% of the building area, they're tucked smack in the middle of the building, they're on the back of the building, they're essentially not visible from the front of the, from Bay Shore Drive. You can see them when you stand in the backyard or you go across Bay Shore Lagoon, but they're tucked in in such a fashion that, you know, we can't see how practically they can create a negative impact from a visual standpoint to any of the surrounding neighbors. And I think I already mentioned that as, from a substantial detriment standpoint, this is 5% of the roof.
You have visited the site?
I have been to the site on a number of occasions, yes.
And does it in particular, in terms of Mr. Weiss's home, does it impact it in any way negatively, again substantial, does it impact it in any way?
In my opinion, it does not. I mean...
Air, view, sight, light?
No.
None?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. The second prong of the negative criteria...
How about anybody else? How about people on the north, south, east, west, other neighborhoods?
Again, I go back to the word de minimis. This is such a minor request, I don't see a negative impact to any of the surrounding neighbors. With regard to the second prong of the negative criteria, I've basically already touched on that, I'll just go over it again briefly. The second prong is, is there any substantial detriment to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance? And I went through the discussion of, if we were building a new house, or our neighbor were building a new house, they could be at elevation 13, they get their two and a half stories, their peak is at 41, there's no variances, they don't even have to come see you. We want to be at 40.8 for these two small areas, but we need a variance because of the direction that we headed with this project. So what I would argue is that this project, this building at 40.8 at its highest point is substantially in compliance with your zoning ordinance. That is what you currently permit a house at this location to be, is at that elevation. We are actually slightly below that elevation by two tenths of a foot. So I think that the positive criteria are established, I think there's actually specific purposes of zoning that are advanced with the application, I think both prongs of the negative criteria are established, and I'll just, again, end with the word de minimis. This is, you know, we do, as you know, we do many applications in front of this board, and this is about as minor of a request as it gets, but you have to remember that you can see the level of importance this is to our client because he's got a, that structure's built, and he's still here willing to tear that off to make it right, and to make it what he believes is more aesthetically appealing in the rear of the building, and what is obviously more functional and more appealing from the interior of the building.
I have no further questions. Does the board have any...
Does the board have any questions of Mr. Barnhart? His wife's got a couple of questions of him, but I don't know if you do. Okay, that said, the infamous Harry Harper is here this night, and I'd like to swear him in.
Say your name for the record.
Record, Harry Harper?
Right man, you stood for somebody that was about to be...
I do. Harry, let's do a duet.
Okay.
Okay. Are you a regi, we stipulate that Mr. Harper's a registered architect, state of Jersey.
So stipulate.
Okay. Harry, why don't you tell the board in your own words exactly, you can take the mic.
Okay.
Exactly, you can refer to your plan, exactly what happened.
What we started off with was an existing home, just we've heard that a number of times. We were going to raise it. On the back of the house, you're going to see there's two dormers, two peaks on the back. That was the original design. That's how it was designed. The difference was, is that these two peaks were actually down about two and a half feet, which then in fact gave you knee walls on the side of about four and a half feet. Plans were approved, building permits were issued, the owner got to the home. I don't think they understood what a knee wall was, or what that was. The only short of it is, they took upon, they and their contractor developed a number of different scenarios where they could not have a 4-foot or 4'6" knee wall. And they played it out physically and tried to build it a number of different ways and still complying with the height. At the end of the day, they wound up with something that you can see in Mr. Ponzo's plans. You saw this kind of a, kind of peaky things going all across the back, and because it's an existing home, you just can't put things where you'd like to put them because there's sometimes, there just isn't anything underneath to hold them. And apparently what they wound up doing was putting two structural beams in between these peaks, which were, it just was in the middle of the room, it doesn't look very good. Came back to us, we kind of went back to the old plan and said, you know, our original idea still works, except that you need, if you want to get this height, you really should try getting a couple extra feet. So that's what we did. The game plan is to raise it to the, the way it was originally designed. And what I've done is I've highlighted on my drawing the area of the two feet. It's not two feet above across the whole entire building, it's these two peaks. And it goes across the back, and then we sloped it off, so in the front you just don't see it. But that's 5% of the roof, so it's not the whole roof. And I think that's really to be understood.
Roof calculation?
Yeah, we actually did a roof plan, that's on the back, and that's part of my free hand sketching. But what I did on the back is I showed, again hatched, where this two-foot area would be. You can see, I don't know if you can see from there, but on my plan, it's fairly obvious that in fact, it's this small area at the ridge, that's it, there's nothing more. And that's what they would like to do, they'd like to stay with what the original plan was designed. God knows they've tried a number of different ways out there, and it really doesn't work. Architecturally, it's not very good. I saw it a few weeks ago, and, well, again, it wasn't very good. I think our initial design was, made sense, and that's what we're going to go back to, that's what we'd like to go back to.
Except...
Except now our knee walls are going to be six and a half foot high, seven foot high, so that it's going to be more of a Cape Cod look inside, not a wall down here, but a wall that's about above my head a little bit. And then the roof will go up, hit an eight-foot part, and go back down again. So it will look like a roof, rather than an attic. I guess that's the best way to describe it. If we had started new, as John said, we wouldn't be here, it's just that simple. And if we had started new, the floor would have been 13, would have actually be a few inches higher than what we're asking for right now. And that's how we got here. Keep in mind, we saved an existing home. If you go by, it's going to turn out to be just a beautiful home. We really did some nice architectural features on it, it's got an elevator in it, it's got all the right things, it's a Margate home. So I really would hope the board could see your way clear to give us an approval for you.
For the record, Harry, what you've shown on there...
For the record, you've shown on there where it's being raised, what is that area?
Well, that's...
I heard the chairman take a note of that, I'd like you to follow some of that's going to be brick, so...
Well, it's going to be stone, the whole foundation and also the elevator area is going to be a stone veneer on the house.
So the foundation that we can see is going to be stone?
Yeah, it won't be stucco, it will be stone. So it'll be aesthetically pleasing, I mean, the neighborhood deserves that.
I have no further questions.
That's our case, subject to a summation, of course. Anyone here from the public like to speak, we'll hear you after the public.
After them?
Yeah. Anyone here from the public like to make a comment? Well, hello.
Is it your name for the record?
Patricia Siegel.
By your last name?
S.I.E.G.E.L.
How much address please?
7908 Bay Shore Drive.
Right, and please sort of disclose any recommendations matter to the local 30% of the 20% of the property.
I very much want to see the approval granted for 8,004 Bay Shore Drive. I think the house is beautiful, and for them to have to change the roof, I think is a shame. To me, I don't even get it, I don't understand what possible hindrance it is to anybody. So that's what I would like to see done, I would like to see them be granted permission to be 24 inches for 5% of the roof above the height that you now require.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Public portion is closed, would you like to address?
Mr. Chairman?
Sorry, Mr. President. What I'm going to do is just set out a couple of things. I'm going to let you make your presentation, call your witnesses, and then what I'd like to do is have you, at that point in time, after you present your case, if you want to cross-examine anybody of their witnesses, you'll do that after yours, and then Mr. Henkin will cross-examine. We have to do it all like as one presentation?
Okay.
I don't know how you wanted to do it, but I mean...
Yeah, my intention was to cross-examine their witnesses first, because I think a lot of the points I wish to make can be drawn out on that cross-examination.
You fix the mic so you're looking at it.
But I'll defer to board practice.
We'll let you cross-examine first.
Okay. I have several questions for the applicant's professionals. I'm not sure if they're more engineering or architectural in nature, but I would defer to the two of you to answer these questions. Mr. Barnhart, are you familiar with the construction efforts to date?
I have not, Mr. Foster, I have not.
You don't know what's happened here in the past?
We're going to need to do something about speaking, you're going to have to come up and talk into the mic too.
I like John, me and John get along, we can stand next to each other. Get along sometimes, not right now. I know what's there today, I have visited the site, I know the conditions of the site right now today.
Okay.
But during the construction process, I have not been involved.
Okay, so you don't know what was there before today?
I do not.
You don't know what variations of the construction of the roof were there before today?
That were physically there? Yeah, I do not.
Okay.
John, we really can't hear you, talk into the mic right here.
Are you familiar with the various iterations of the plans submitted to Margate in connection with this application?
I have seen two variations of plans, yes.
And are you, are you, so you know, I think your testimony earlier was that at some point after this structure was raised, it was built with a two-gable end roof structure that was fully compliant for height, correct?
I did not say that, no.
Do you know that to be true, though?
I do not know that to be true.
Okay. Perhaps Mr. Harper...
Could you share the mic, it really, it's not for us to hear, it's for the record.
Okay.
So move the mic back and forth.
Do you want us to hold it and pass it back?
I don't care what you do, just as long as it's being used.
Just right there, that will work.
There you go.
Okay. So would Mr. Harper know the answer to that? I mean, I can probably do this...
We'll stipulate that, he said that.
We'll stipulate that they could actually build a compliant three-story structure with a two-dormer architectural field, correct?
He testified that after...
The testimony was very clearly and will stipulate, it was not livable, but it was compliant, and it wasn't livable because the knee wall was 4'6" high, they couldn't even put a television or a buhr there.
Okay, thank you. So that two-dormer structure did not exceed the 28 height restriction, correct?
That's my understanding, but again, I did not see it, or I was not involved in that part of the project.
And was that construction actually permitted, and were plans submitted for that type of construction?
The plans that I saw had two peaks and were permitted, yes.
And in fact, that's why a building permit was issued to your clients, because they complied with the various requirements of this zoning ordinance, correct?
Certainly.
You familiar with the four-gable construction?
I am, yes.
That too is compliant for height, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and as Mr. Henkin just said, clients weren't happy with the 4-foot knee walls, correct?
That's, that's what you heard, yes.
Okay. So we decided to raise to a four-gable system, correct? That was the result of them being unhappy with the 4-foot knee walls?
Again, that's my understanding.
Okay. And now that we've raised it by the four-gable system, we're still not quite happy with the way it looks, correct?
Again, that is my understanding.
But it is compliant for height?
It is compliant.
So the applicants, the architects, and their builders have already built two variations of this building that are completely compliant for all zoning purposes?
Again, I can't answer that because I never saw the first version actually constructed.
But Mr. Henkin stipulated on the record that they did.
Then Mr. Henkin can answer that question.
Do you know if a building permit was issued for the four-gable structure?
I do not know if there was a modified permit issued for the four-gable structure. I do not know if there was a modified permit issued for the four-gable structure.
What's the height of the interior walls with the four-gable system?
I did not met, like the exterior, the wall of the bedroom itself?
Correct.
At the perimeter walls, I did not take any measurements. I took a measurement at, just to see what the elevation was from the floor to the beam. Harper would have to answer that question if he can.
Mr. Harper, do you know the answer to that question?
Can we have both of them up there so you can ask either one of them questions? Would that work?
Well, you couldn't hear us before. Yes, it should be, the way it's drawn right now, the height should be seven feet, the knee wall.
So the knee wall's now seven foot, correct?
Correct.
So by installing the four-gable system, you've now gained...
I haven't gained anything. I did not design the four-gable system.
Okay, let me rephrase the question. By constructing the four-gable system, your clients have gained an additional 2.4 feet in height in connection with the walls, correct?
I'm telling you what I've designed on this plan. I don't know what they have out there.
Somebody has to be able to answer this question as to how high the walls are.
I'm not the one.
Okay. Is there anybody? Mr. Hankin, do you have anybody can answer that question?
Well, look...
I can tell you this much, cut it off, four foot, six inches, that's why we're here.
And we think they're seven and a half now?
That's what they're being designed for. Seven foot, not seven and a half, seven foot.
We've gained height, correct, by going from the two-gable to the four-gable?
That's why we're here.
Well, no, that's not why we're here, because why we're here is because you want to go further than the seven foot now, correct?
No.
Okay, what are the walls?
We went from four foot to seven foot.
Okay, now what are the walls for the proposed structure?
Seven foot.
So you are going to just basically push the middle of this structure up, correct?
Two feet, yes.
Just the center?
Just the center.
The rafters, the rafters will touch down where they currently touch down, correct?
With the new roof design, yes.
Now, if we look at the two-gable system that you're proposing...
Can you pass the mic back and forth? I'm sorry, we only have one.
If we look at the two-gable system that you're proposing, there are in fact two gable ends, correct?
There are two, there are two gable ends.
And this construction requires a height variance, correct?
This construction will require a height variance.
Okay. And your clients' past construction efforts have established that they can do a two-gable end construction without this variance, correct? But the knee walls would be lower. And they're not happy with that?
They're not happy with it.
Okay.
Correct.
Just a clarification, real quick.
Yes, yes.
The knee walls are going to be lower, and you're proposing, you just said you proposed them at seven foot?
Well, they exist that way now.
How much lower are they going to be?
Not at all.
No, they're not.
My original design, the knee walls were four foot high. They came and came up with some other design that has four gables at the back.
But the walls exist now. The seven-foot walls are there.
They were able to accomplish that, but in fact, what happened was they actually made the low point of the room in the middle of the room. So you effectively have a six-foot or seven-foot knee wall, a beam at seven foot in the middle of the room, and then another knee wall at about seven feet. What we're proposing to do is to get rid of the beam, put the gables, so to jab two gables, and that height would effectively be two feet or 5% of the roof. So if you looked at where I sketch, you'll see there's this little area that's hatched at the very top, and that's the two-foot that we're talking about.
Mr. Harper, how will, and excuse me because I'm not an architect and I'm not a builder, how will you accomplish the construction change? Will you go down to the floor and build up, or will you merely fill in the peaks?
The two outside walls will stay exactly where they are. Where the beam is presently will remain in the wall, so that in fact, we will span the two peaks, so it'd be one peak and then another peak.
Okay, so the exterior walls, the walls on the side of Mr. Weiss and the walls on the side of the other neighbor, they don't get any higher?
Not any higher.
The peak of the roof changes, though.
By two feet.
Okay, and is that peak...
By two feet.
Is that peak compliant in terms of slope?
The existing one or the new one?
The proposed.
Proposed, be two feet above.
Slower. Is the slope compliant?
Yes, the slope is compliant.
How many bedrooms are on the third floor?
I believe there's two.
Two? And do you know how many bedrooms there are in total in the house?
I think it's five.
Okay. Total of five or five plus to two?
I can look at all the plans and tell you. I don't remember, to be honest with you.
Okay. My calculations were eight. Does that sound familiar?
No, that does not sound familiar.
No? Could you confirm how many rooms there are?
Yep, you can weigh this. Eight bedrooms.
Eight bedrooms?
Okay.
When you construct this addition, will you be sistering to the existing roof joists?
Which existing roof joists are we talking about?
The existing ones, the ones that are there now.
No.
No, so what happens to the existing roof joists?
We'll remove those joists and build a new roof.
Okay, but the actual walls don't change?
The walls do not change.
In terms of aesthetics, don't you get the same aesthetic feel with the proposed roof as you do with the existing, I'm sorry, not the existing, but the prior version of the two-gable end system? It's just elongated vertically?
I don't understand the question. It's two gables, it's going to be two gables. It's not going to change.
Okay, so two gables are two gables, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So when you had the two gables before, it looked the same as it does as proposed, correct?
Except that the very, very top was two foot lower.
Correct, so you get no aesthetic improvement. You already had a compliant version of this building with a two-gable system that looked exactly the same. All you got is more height, correct?
That's why we're here.
Okay. So you don't have any aesthetic benefit? You already had the aesthetic benefit?
I don't understand the question. I really don't.
With respect to the flood...
That's John. John?
With respect to the flood, any construction you do over the raised structure would secure it from flood, correct? Regardless of height?
I'm going to reiterate what Harry said. I don't understand the question.
Okay. When you raised this building, you brought it to elevation what?
It's at 11.34.
So everything on top of that is now secured from flood, correct?
The structure is now secured from flood.
Okay, so regardless of whether it's the first floor, second floor, third floor, 10th floor, they're all now secured from flood, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So regardless of how high you go, it doesn't really matter where your elevation is, correct?
Regardless of how high we go, it doesn't matter where our elevation is.
Anything above your base elevation is protected from flood.
That would be correct.
Familiar with the master plan and the zoning plans for this particular area?
Yes.
Do you know that in 1998, the height limit in this area was 34 feet?
I do know that.
Okay, do you know that in 2004, they dropped it from 34 feet to 30 feet?
I do know that.
And again, in 2007, they dropped it from 30 feet to 28 feet, which is the existing
Take your word for it on 2007, but I do know that it's now 28 feet.
Okay, great.
But I do also believe that there's contemplation of raising it back to 30 feet.
But that's not on the books, that's not on the records. You're here today with the 28 foot requirement.
Correct, but I also pointed out that this building is permitted at elevation 41.
But that's for a new structure, correct?
Yeah, I'd have, that would be a question for the zoning, for the building code official, whether an elevated structure is permitted to take the benefit of the higher elevation as well.
But your testimony was, had you built new, you could go up to 41, I think you said?
Correct.
Okay, but this isn't new.
This is not new.
So that standard is not applicable to what you're doing today, correct?
I don't know that to be the case.
Okay. Well, if it were, you wouldn't be here for a variance, right?
No, we would still be here for a variance because we are greater than 28 feet above our floor. The ordinance says you have to be more than 28 feet above your floor. With the ABFE map, your floor is permitted to be higher, which lets you go 28 feet from that point, which is what gives you an elevation of 41 to the peak. We're asking for an elevation of 40.8 to the peak.
Which would be more consistent with your construction.
But we still need a variance because we are greater than 28 feet from our floor.
Okay. You spoke about the development potential of this particular property.
Sure.
If they pushed their structure all the way toward the lagoon, as you testified they could, they'd have no backyard, correct? Or they'd have a limited backyard, right?
These properties are very fortunate in their depths. Many properties on the lagoon and the bayfront have backyards that are approximately 10 to 15 feet in depth. That's, these, this area of Bay Shore Drive on Bay Shore Lagoon happens to have very deep lots, so they have the benefit of large backyards.
To do that, they'd have to lose the pool?
They'd have to modify and build a different pool.
Okay, but they couldn't keep the existing pool?
That would be correct.
Okay, and then they would probably, what was the rear yard setback on the lagoon side?
I think the minimum permitted is 10.
Okay, so they'd lose everything on the...
I've done 10-foot rear yard setbacks with pools on dozens of occasions in this town.
They would lose a lot of their backyard and they'd be have more on the front?
They would lose their backyard, but as an alternative to what we propose, as I mentioned on balance, this is a dramatically improved project with regard to airlight and open space in the rear yard.
The 5% calculation, who calculates that number? Is that you or...
That was calculated by Mr. Harper.
Mr. Harper, can you tell me how you calculated the 5%?
Took the total roof area and divided by what the variance, the variance that we're asking for.
So it's your position that 5% of the total third floor roof is above elevation 28?
Yes.
Okay, and that's from bayside to roadside?
No, actually, it doesn't really approach the roadside. It stops at the middle of the house.
Okay, so it's more toward the bayside?
It's the bayside.
Okay.
And... It's 14 foot long by about four and about 3.8 feet by 14 foot in one spot and 19 foot in another spot.
Are you familiar with the pool area, sir?
No.
John, are you?
Familiar with, I've been in the rear yard, but that's what you're asking, and I've seen it on multiple plans.
Now, you have on your plan pavers, correct?
We have on our plan a representation in the rear yard of pavers, a pool, and an existing, I guess it's a little poolhouse area or something.
Okay. Now, the pavers, they're intended to surround the pool?
We were not the author of the site plan, so the author of the site plan was Mr. Harper, and then it was modified by another engineer who's not here.
Okay, but on the plan before the board today, you show pavers surrounding the pool, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are you also aware that the pool is also surrounded by impervious concrete?
Currently?
Currently.
I don't recall seeing that.
Okay, I'm going to show you a picture.
Okay.
That's a picture of the pool. You see the concrete?
Yep.
All right, and you probably didn't see it because it's now covered up by some black sand.
Do you want to mark your pictures?
Which would probably be pavement...
Send it, you want to mark the pictures?
Sand for setting pavers. Yes.
I didn't show you.
I said that would probably be sand for setting pavers, leveling pavers.
Just mark them P, public one, public two.
I mean, is P 1A and P 1B?
Hey, Stan, when they're done, Stan over here. Can we look at those photos?
Yes. But I think that we, if he asks, look at them, and then he has to let Mr. Barnhart use them so we can answer the questions.
Chris, when were they taken?
Mr. Weiss, can you please testify to my little picture?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I want to object. Here's why I'm objecting. We stipulated at the, what they're trying to do, first of all, the pool isn't an issue. The coverage isn't an issue. We have a zoning permit, but I will stipulate, and no site work has been done on this property. So what this is, this is a typical neighbor trying to pick, 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 pick things apart. We will stipulate that the coverage, no matter what is shown, we have a zoning permit, will comply with the zoning permit. If they want to challenge the zoning permit, let them go to Superior Court and do it. It's about a year too late. But if they want to do it, let them go do it. We will, notwithstanding that zoning permit, and I said it at the outset, we will comply comply with every coverage requirement that there is. Mr. McLaren, can...
Let me, let me ask you a question, can I get a proffer as to why we're bringing up the pavers, because I don't think anyone understands that at this point in time?
The, the plan shows a paved area, uh, it is very evident that there's new concrete surrounding the pool, that's in violation of your ordinance, which says there should be no impervious, uh, bituminous concrete underneath the paver layer, layer.
Okay, so as it relates to the application today, what, how does that relate to the application? It's, it may be a violation, but there's a separate, there's a separate procedure for that, not...
And that's fine, we want the board to be aware that, just like they've not been satisfied with the height of their room on the second floor, there's other potential issues on site too.
So I guess when they get, when, when this is over and whatever happens, there's gonna be an inspection and our officer's gonna say, well, you know, you have the, you gotta...
Well, I, I can tell you that letters have been written.
But what I'm saying though is it doesn't really, in my opinion, have anything to do with it tonight, but I do think it's relevant, but I, I don't think it has anything to do with...
Okay, well, if it's relevant, the board can, you know, kind of figure it out, but we have...
Well, it's gotta be probative, so anything that's relevant.
There have been, there have been letters written to the city inquiring about this condition long ago, we've not received any response, uh, we've asked about it several times, we've not gotten any answers, so...
Okay, but what I'm saying is this isn't the forum to bring up that dispute.
I understand that.
I mean, we're really here honestly about a height variance of...
Under the, under the polling case, as, as Mr. Hankin mentioned, you have to consider the totality of the site, so...
Of course, but, but in every, every case, you have to consider totality of it.
So this is part of the totality of the site.
Polling and about 100 other cases say that, so...
Well, my point is this is part of the totality of the site, that's all.
Can I, can I speak for a moment, please, on that issue?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, yes, my name is David Was.
And, 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 you've heard of this many, many, so I would like to present another question.
I do.
All right, well, you're, you're represented by Mr. Fessenda?
Yes, this is my client.
Okay, so I guess he'll, he'll ask you the questions that you wanna...
Well, first of all, I don't want to take up too much time of the board on this issue, but it is relevant, and it's relevant for a variety of reasons. The primary reason it's relevant is, is because as you're going to hear later, you haven't heard the case that we have to put on yet, but when you're done hearing it, you're gonna, there's gonna be a lot of, uh, questions that you're going to ask yourselves as to how this happened and how that happened, and it's going to go to the issue of credibility, of whether or not this applicant will perform in accordance with the zoning code going forward. Now, what just happened with respect to that backyard is a flagrant intentional violation of the zoning code. I asked that the board not ignore that. It's obvious, it can't be disputed, it's on, it's in images, I saw it. Let me, let me finish for a moment.
I don't want you to finish right now. I don't want you to finish.
Hold on a second.
I'm running the meeting, you don't finish when I say not to finish.
Well, I'd like to...
What I'd like to tell you is though, I understand your concerns and so does the board, but the board doesn't have jurisdiction concerning these violations. They don't, they just don't, and I know that doesn't make you happy because you want to bring all these things up, but in the end, when all this is done and there's an inspection done by the municipality, these things are gonna be brought up and they're gonna have to deal with those things. But it doesn't have anything to do with the, whether we're gonna, whether the board's gonna approve the height variance or not today, it's not relevant.
I understand.
That's all I wanted to say, I know, I mean to interrupt you, but I had to...
But there were some questions, I thought I could, uh, elucidate the issues here and make it go faster.
What I'm, what I'm trying to do is stream, streamline...
No, I appreciate that.
To what really is relevant here tonight.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
And may I just get your address?
Uh, I live at 806 Bay Shore Drive.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Bart Barag, uh, who's a architect, licensed architect, I believe he's appeared before this board on multiple occasions, I would ask that he be, uh...
Let, let me ask you this, are, are you done cross-examining all the witnesses at this point in time?
Yes.
Okay, so you're now gonna present your case, uh, your, your case to object to it or whatever you want to bring up. So Mr. Hankin will get a chance to cross-examine once you call your witnesses.
Certainly, okay.
Uh, state your name for the record, please.
Bart Barag, B-A-R-A-G.
And, 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 you've heard of this many, many, so I would like to present a question.
I do.
Bart, you're a New Jersey licensed architect?
Yes, I am. Uh, I've had a license in the States since 99, I've been licensed in Maryland since 77.
And you've appeared before this board here in Margate on how many occasions?
Uh, I've appeared before planning board and zoning board over the years, uh, over a dozen times, I've been before this board as recently as January.
Are you familiar with the plans of the applicant tonight?
Uh, I am.
Are you familiar with the site that belongs to the applicant?
I am.
Are you familiar with the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the zoning ordinance?
I am.
Okay, you're familiar obviously with the Weiss property, correct?
I am.
Uh, I think we have this stipulation on the record, but my question to you is can this applicant build a compliant two dormer structure?
He absolutely can.
Okay, and how, how does he accomplish that, other than putting back what he already built?
Can I go over my history with the house first?
Sure.
I, I think it's gonna basically set the scene for what we've been involved in, uh, I've been reviewing architectural plans and the construction process for this house since January of this year, long enough to have reviewed three submitted roofs, two of which were probably built, a fourth roof that was built is currently still in place and recently had its structural framing plan submitted subsequent to being built. Uh, as far as I know, there's no architectural plans on the four gable, uh, roof, uh, that is existing, and evidently tonight's application would be the fifth submitted roof to Margate, and I, I wasn't sure if it was meant to modify or replace the existing four gable in place, uh, I think from the testimony tonight, it's sort of both, uh, they're gonna tear off the roof and keep the walls, uh, at least that's my understanding. Uh, in any case, uh, I reviewed their first set of construction documents from which they secured a building permit in late January, I sent a letter dated February 2nd to my clients in which I pointed out three non-compliant zoning items, specifically short one parking space, a third floor area that exceeded 50% of the floor below, and most importantly, a roof height measured from a raised first floor that seemingly exceeded Margate's 28-foot height limit. When I say it seems there was a height violation, the architectural drawings were very vague in showing vertical dimensions, other than the existing floor-to-floor dimensions. The 28-foot height that was shown on the plans went to a roof over a closet, uh, that was visibly lower than the main roof's ridge beam, which was the highest point. There were also no heights of the bearing walls for this main roof at both the front and the rear walls, uh, so what does that mean? Even if the walls were built to a five-foot knee wall height, uh, and this wouldn't work at the front where there's an elevator and a bathroom because you need more height, 6'8 in those rooms, but even if they built to a five-foot knee wall, uh, the roof would have still been 29 feet high, which was a foot higher than what Margate allows. If the walls were built to a more likely seven-foot or eight-foot height, then the roof's height would have been 31 feet or 32 feet, uh, above the first floor, and that's three to four feet higher than Margate allows. So I sent this letter to my client, uh, who has a friend who's both a civil and structural engineer, not involved on this project, uh, but he has a relationship with the architectural firm who designed the house. He reviewed my, uh, letter and he forwarded the letter to Mr. Harper's office and he asked for a reply, as well as sections to clear up the vagueness at the third floor. They did resubmit their plans about a month later, on March 7th, uh, and at this time, the situation was kept out of the building department in order to resolve the problem. All the building department knew was that new plans were submitted. Okay, I reviewed the revised plans the following day and saw that they did make changes, specifically they provided an additional parking spot, they lowered the third floor roof, uh, they did submit sections, but they didn't show much more information. So at that point, I drew my own sections, uh, I had all the dimensions on, on the plan, and what I noticed was that, I, I, well, let me backtrack, I kept the 6'10 inch height at the front of the house because of the elevator and the bathrooms. It resulted in a 10-inch knee wall at the rear of the house, and according to their plans, each bedroom showed a nonusable floor space in two, in, in both corners of each bedroom, amounting to two foot by four foot, uh, and the reason...
The third floor bedrooms?
Uh, two bedrooms upstairs each on the third floor.
Okay.
Uh, and, and what happened, because of this unusable floor space, because the height was lower than five feet, it actually took habitable floor space out of the third floor and it brought the area down to what was compliant. So the height was fine, the parking spot was required, and the floor area was fine, the house was compliant. I sent a letter to my client and I said it was compliant. I also told him I didn't think they'd be happy with the scheme and I seriously doubted that they would build it. My section indicated that the low roof areas were actually two foot by 10 foot, and this effectively reduced the third floor master bedrooms to a width of 11 feet. With doors and other openings, you'd be hard-pressed to furnish these rooms as a child's room with a twin bed and a full bed, let alone master bedrooms with king and queen beds. Uh, I sent a letter to the building department and the planning department verifying that, that I thought the plans complied, but we needed their inspections to ensure that they would be built that way. Work progressed, this was back in, uh, in April, work progressed for the next month and construction finally reached the third floor. The roof was framed and covered by a tarp just before Memorial Day weekend, and then work stopped at this level for about three to four weeks. Everything after that was built undercover of tarp. Uh, I, I wasn't sure what they were doing, but right before July 4th weekend, tarp came off, the four gable roof appeared, uh, and I was surprised, needless to say. Uh, I went to the building department a couple days later to look at the plans, and I was surprised because what I found was a two-gable roof, very similar to what was submitted back in January, again, not much in the way of dimensions, uh, but I, I felt that that, uh, that roof could comply, but if they built it, they built it under, under tarp and they must have done of it because what they ended up with is the four gable roof.
Sorry, I told you, I held them like you're...
What they ended up with was the four gable roof, and, uh, uh, I thought they were gonna keep it, uh, but it was shortly after that that we were alerted that they were coming here for approvals to build a fifth roof scheme. So that, that's basically my history of the house as far as I know, but what, what I'd like to do is point out why I feel they could have built a two-gable roof that complied. Uh, in, in order to do that though, I'd, I'd like your, uh, patience while I demonstrate to you Margate's two-and-a-half-story, uh, uh, house design and what governs it in addition to the height of the roof. I set the floor-to-floor heights similar to the applicant's heights, which are modest, eight foot at the first floor for ceiling, eight foot at the second floor. The floor systems are only 12 at the second floor, 10 inches deep at the third floor. Uh, you all know how the two-and-a-half story works. The, uh, the height is 28 feet above elevation 11, however, there's a mandated roof slope of 5 and 12. You can get an eight-foot-high room on the third floor, but your room's only gonna be seven feet in width, doesn't make much of a room, it's not even a legal room according to the building code. Uh, but what happens though, you're allowed to take these walls, stretch them apart. You can stretch them apart up to 21, over 21 feet and get five-foot knee walls, and that'll work.
Does that not exceed the 50% of the second floor?
Well, you have to be careful the other way, and, and what I'm saying is, it's the maximum, I mean, you can do it less, 18 feet, 17 feet, get a six-foot knee wall, and you have a better control over the area. But the most important point I want to make is that this sloped roof, coming from the 28-foot height, is all part of Margate's height ordinance. Anything above that point needs a variance, it's not just the peak. You have to follow that 5 and 12 slope all the way down to the knee wall. What's involved is the height of the knee wall, the, the amount of slope, and the overall height of the roof. All this comes into effect, it's not just the peak that exceeds the 28 feet. So how does it affect this client? Let's go back to their four gable roof, not knowing what they're, what they were doing, I wasn't sure if they were gonna tear off the knee wall, maybe build it up to eight feet, but in any case, you see what they have, the shaded portion is their roof, and it has a seven-foot, five-inch knee wall, which I got off their planning board application. The compliant roof is what's shown, is what's shown dotted, and, and that comes up to the 28-foot height and it slopes down at the required slope. Therefore, whatever's above that dotted line is a non-compliant roof, it's not just the tip that goes above 28, it's the height of the knee wall, the whole slope of the rafters up to this point, plus the height.
Uh, what you're doing...
Wait, there's a discrepancy here, you're saying seven foot, six inches, he's saying seven foot, is it that six inches you're talking about? That six inches is above? No, I'm not talking, I, I, I got the seven foot, five inches right off their planning board application.
But how far is that shaded line above your dotted line?
I assumed that they were gonna, uh, actually, no, it's, it's at seven foot five to the top of that wall, the dimension's right here.
How much higher is that existing wall than what you're saying is a compliant roof? Is that six inches?
You mean the dotted line?
Yeah.
Uh, the dotted line is, uh, six foot two.
You have a roof here that you're saying's compliant, they have a roof here that you're saying's not compliant, what's the distance between these two roofs?
Well, that, that depends, at, at a seven-foot-high, seven-foot-five-high, uh, wall that I just found out tonight that they're keeping, uh, it's 14 inches.
So the entire roof is 14 inches too high?
That's based at the slope that the existing roof is, however, I have reason to doubt that that's a, a legal roof slope. Uh, I think you're gonna find that when they rebuild this roof, they're gonna rebuild it at a legal slope of 5 and 12. And that's a 5 and 12 slope, and, and you're gonna find that the differential's gonna be 24 inches, like the applicant's counsel said, possibly 28 inches. Uh, but there's something very important that I want to point out. Getting back to the fact that I said that the whole roof, the knee, the height of the knee wall plus the peak is all what doesn't apply, if you look at the added volume that's introduced into the third floor, it's this shaded level right here, and that's gonna vary from 14 inches if they kept this slope at seven foot five, or it could increase to 24 or 28 inches if they build it with a legal slope of 5 and 12. It's this whole area right here. Now, this is the important part, where does that area occur on plan? I have it hatched right here, it's both entire gable ends, that's the true impact of the applicant's proposal. This area that's shaded is 493 square feet, the entire third floor is 914 square feet. The area that they're proposing to raise that, that doesn't conform with Margate's ordinance is 53% of the top level. I don't think that's very de minimis.
Bart, is the architectural benefit from the proposed roof any different than the architecture that was already built and ripped out?
I don't say it, no.
So they're gonna look the same?
Yeah.
So there's no advancement of aesthetic beauty by constructing this roof two feet higher than it was already constructed?
Uh, not that I say, no. Uh, I, I do have a problem with the applicant's professionals saying that the knee walls were only four and a half feet. I drew a scale drawing section through this, uh, and, and I got 5'8, and I stand behind my, my scale drawing, it's based on Mr. Harper's plan dimensions. There is one other thing I'd like to say, is that all the construction drawings on file with the building department until it's time called for the house to be raised to elevation 11. It wasn't until I saw the applicant's planning board submission that I saw that it was actually raised to 11.5. Uh, tonight, there was testimony saying that it was 11.33. Is this house dribbling like a basketball? It, it seems to be going up and down, I don't know where it is, but wherever it is now, if it's at 11.5, that extra six inches that they achieved by raising the house up, it may protect them against flood that much better, that's fine. However, the Margate's height, uh, restriction is measured from elevation 11, now they're at, they're at 11.5. Uh, it's my understanding that they lose six inches from the, the roof height from the first floor. Now they're limited to 27.6 from the first floor. With that in mind, if they would have built this house according to the working drawings, their knee wall should have been six foot two, uh, but they can't get it anymore because the house is, again, six inches higher than it was supposed to be, but they should be able to get 5'8. Now, as you know, five foot is the minimum, you ride all over town, you see houses with five-foot knee walls all over the place. I live on the 600 block of Claremont Avenue, I went to the post office on Saturday, I drove down Claremont on my way home, between Atlantic and Monmouth, I counted 16 of these two-and-a-half-story houses. This house is all over Margate, it's the most popular thing we have. Why? Because that's who's buying these houses, uh, the second homeowners, they get six to eight bedrooms, and it's a wonderful thing for their families. Uh, it's not a unique thing, you may not see too much of it at the board, because a lot of these houses are getting built by spec builders, and, and they have it down to a science, they don't need variances.
Bart, I, I'm, I'm a little confused here, as the house exists today, if they just finished it off and as it is, are you saying it's non-compliant right now?
No, it's perfect, it's perfectly compliant.
Only if they invert that roof and put that roof up, they're not compliant.
Sure, the, the minute... The minute they, they take this roof and extend it here, I don't, I don't know if you can...
No, I, I, I know what you're saying.
You can see the, the linework?
Right.
Once they extend it up, then the height of those knee walls are higher than they're allowed under, under the ordinance.
And that's...
But they're not, but they're not changing.
And I'm saying they have to. I'm saying they have to.
Could you bring it here, a minute? This is where you have me confused, if they just take, I don't know if the board wants to see this, if they just take these and invert them, these stay the same, how does the wall change? But this is my confusion, so...
To comply with which? Because, because the compliant roof is here at 28 and it slopes down to this point, and, and they're above that point.
But this roof already exists that you said is compliant?
Yeah, but they're changing the roof, the only reason why...
They're only changing this part of the roof.
Well, you still have to look at it though, that it's, it's a twin peak roof, and if it, if it went to elevation 28 and its knee walls were at six feet...
Right.
Then this, then everything above it is non-compliant.
Okay. I understand.
Is that 5 and 12 a bit?
Correct, correct.
But if their application is approved tonight, the knee wall, I mean, the wall on the side will not change, or you're saying they will have to change that wall?
That's what I'm saying, they're saying they won't change it, I'm saying they need a variance not to change it.
You turn that V upside down and, and I don't see how the wall's changing, I just, I, I don't want to... I, I don't want to stick on this issue, but-
It, it has to do, it has to do with this picture.
You're just stipulating what I'm changing, the knee wall. So you can say whatever you want, but what I-
I'm just trying to understand what he's saying.
When, that's when you're, if you get approved, if-
Yeah, I'm saying-
You say that anyway, so.
He doesn't have to change it, but you have to issue a variance to, to approve that.
But the knee wall's not changing, so.
But the, the knee wall that they have now is only compliant based on the four-gable roof.
I understand that, but that's why they're here tonight.
Well, they're here to get rid of-
What I didn't under, what I didn't understand was, I thought you said they were going to physically raise that knee wall. That doesn't seem to be the issue. So that was my concern. So you can continue. I'm satisfied with, with that answer.
Okay. No, I'm done.
I have a, one more question. They had proposed an alternative of a flat roof. Can you tell us what the difference of that would be? That would keep the knee walls down-
I'm asking, Bart.
I, I don't know that he heard that. Um, I, I can tell you that in a very brief conversation with Mr. Hankin this morning, he did mention a flat roof. Uh, I have no particulars as to how they would accomplish that, perhaps if they wanted to elaborate on that in front of the board.
Well, that would also require a variance. You can't have a flat roof in Margate.
That would require a pitch variance?
Yes.
Yes, but other than that, I don't know anything about the flat roof.
My question is, since Bart did all this work, and he did a nice job on that, if they went with a flat roof, how would that fit into what you just showed us? Would they have to lower those than knee walls, or would they keep them and just get a roof variance for pitch for the flat roof?
I'd have to find out more information. Uh, I mean, if they did a flat roof to elevation 28, does that mean they'd have a, a nine-and-a-half-foot, uh, wall height?
The wall's not changed. Where did they change it? They're not changing the wall.
Well, then, then they'd have a flat roof at seven foot, five? I, I don't see where that helps the architectural space.
The flat, seven foot, five is here. The flat roof goes across here. I'm not trying to take sides here. I'm just trying to understand what you're saying. The flat roof will be between these two peaks. Seven foot is at the bottom of those peaks, so it will be up whatever that distance is. The flat roof would be up here. This is the seven foot now that, that they're objecting to. The flat roof will be up here so they would have another foot or so. Okay. I, I don't understand your quest, your question.
Well, it was his question, so.
Are you, are you confusing the two about the Margate 50% rule and the building code one-third floor because of the seven foot between the two walls and the five foot for the building, for the zoning? Is, is that why you want to change the knee wall? Because of headroom?
Uh, I'm, I'm saying that the knee wall has to be lowered due to the increased downward slope at 5 and 12 of, of the twin gables.
Okay, so you're not, you're leaving the building code out of the equation? You're just going to-
No, this is, this is strictly zoning.
Okay.
Strictly zoning and how it relates to Margate's two-and-a-half-story regulations.
The architect being a perfect gentleman, I, I don't mean any disrespect to him, but I have nothing to cross-examine him about. Absolutely nothing. I don't find his, honestly, his testimony to be material to the-
Okay, but the rest of the-
I'm going to tell him why. You got your turn.
So you're waving your-
I don't object. I have no, no cross-examination of that witness. Thank you.
Tiffany Cuviello. I do.
Tiffany, you're a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Have you appeared before this board and other boards, uh, in a planning capacity?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Hankin stipulates his client, so we can move on.
Thank you. You're familiar with the plans?
Yes, I am.
You're familiar with the applicant's site?
Yes, I am.
Surrounding neighborhood and the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Um, and you're familiar with our client's property, the White's property?
Yes.
And you've heard the testimony to this point, correct?
Correct.
Okay, can you provide the court with the benefit of your opinion, uh, as a professional planner in the state of New Jersey as to this application?
Yes. Um, so my role is to look at the positive and the negative criteria that was presented to you this evening and explain to you why I don't believe they satisfy the positive criteria, um, on this application. They're asking for a variance tonight for C2 standard, uh, the flexible C variance, where they believe that the benefits, um, are outweighing the detriments and the purposes of the municipal land use law are advanced due to the proposed, um, application before you this evening. Mr. Hankin started off by referencing a case, Pollan v. South Plainfield. Pollan v. South Plainfield says that you have to look at the entirety of the application and the benefits from the entirety of the application, uh, not just focus on the variance itself. And, and I agree, that is an appropriate case law for many variances. In fact, it was used in your first case this evening, and it made sense because they were raising the house, um, higher to get to a better elevation so they could get parking off the street, and there was a lot more to that where there were additional benefits to the community because of what they were improving on that property. What Mr. Hankin didn't reference is that you have to read Pollan in conjunction with the Kaufman case, Kaufman v. Warren. In that case, the court said that-
I'm going to object to her testimony unless she's an attorney. She's given a legal opinion on the construction of a case, unless she's an attorney, which I know she isn't.
I think, I, I, although we don't go by the rules of evidence, I think maybe she should limit her testimony not to citing cases, but just as to the standards under the planning that applies.
Well, Kaufman is important because, as you know, Mr. Cox is the, William Cox has a book on land use law.
Well, I, I understand that, but what, what I think the objection is, is that you're citing case law. I think it'd just be more appropriate to testify as to how your testimony than Mr. Fessendekin related to Kaufman.
Okay, well-
Just the facts of the case.
Well, she has to be interested as to the law. I mean, it's her understanding of the law. If it's wrong, Mr. Hankin will point it out.
Non-lawyers can't speak as to the law.
And lawyers can't speak as-
He's giving, she's giving a legal interpretation of the Kaufman opinion, which the board is aware of anyhow.
Look, I, I think, I think what's hap-
This is up to argument. You guys shut up.
I, I think what's happening is that she's trying to apply the facts of this case to the standards that are set forth in Kaufman. So I understand that, but I think she's citing cases and just let her apply the, the-
Don't reference case law.
Okay, so-
Exactly. We'll, we'll answer the questions that apply that then you can fit into the case like we do at every trial.
So the standard that also applies when you look at the entirety of the application is the standard that the benefit has to be to the community as a whole and not to an individual property owner. Um, so you have to put those two, two concepts together as part of meeting the positive criteria. The applicant gave two purposes of the act that were advanced. The first was, um, to provide for safety from flood, fire, and natural hazards. And that is a purpose of the act, um, and that is advanced because the house is being raised. The house being raised is not the reason they're here today. They're here today because they changed their minds about the construction. In fact, if I would quote, um, the statements were that they were extremely disappointed when they came inside. Uh, they were not happy with the design as it was. The raising of the roof, these 24 inches, while it seems de minimis and inconsequential, is a specious argument as a benefit to the community for what is in effect a self-created hardship. The applicant has the ability and had provided plans to the, to the town that actually complied with the 28-foot requirement. They didn't like the four-and-a-half-foot knee wall. They were not happy with the four-and-a-half-foot knee wall, but it met the standard of the town for height. And that's important because Margate City has taken several pains and effort to manage the height of new construction and reconstruction throughout the city. Based on the changes to their ordinance from 19, uh, before 2004 to today, where it went from 34 feet to 28 feet in height, and that's in your master plan. In fact, in your master plan- If you would give me some space on this. The 2006 master plan report included a map of building height areas. And it showed the generalized building height areas everywhere in the township, and that was used and utilized in order to determine the appropriate building height and stories throughout, um, the city, um, when you amended your ordinance. In this area, and I have a blow-up of this, this is from the 2006 master plan. I zoomed into the area in question, and I point to the properties and the neighborhood. There is a legend, and the legend demonstrates that in this area, in this block, on this side of the street, the homes range in height from 16 to 25 feet. Now, that's at elevation nine. That's the existing elevation, uh, before you raised the house. So the reason that's important is that we're asking for, they're asking for a two-foot increase to the height, but the homes in that area are already much lower in height because they're, they're, they're smaller homes. They're two, two-story homes that have existed in the neighborhood, and while they're allowed to have two-and-a-half stories, they're not allowed to exceed the additional two feet and go up to 30 feet for the height of their building. The applicant is not happy with the way the prop, the design came out. They don't like the seven-foot beam. They want to have more headroom in, in their bedrooms. They want to go higher than seven feet. If you look at the architectural drawings, and you can't really see this, um, from where you're sitting, I think you may have copies, um, if this knee wall is going to be at seven feet, it appears that they have another one foot to the peak of the roof. So they want eight-foot ceilings. That's what they want. They want eight-foot ceilings. They're not happy with seven-foot ceilings. They want eight-foot ceilings. They're not happy that the beam is in the center of the room, which will be over their bed. Um, they want to have more open space. They didn't like the four-and-a-half-foot knee wall. They wanted a seven and a, seven-foot knee wall. They changed the plans without coming in for building permits to change the plans. They had a building permit. It's a valid building permit. They did not put new plans on file to make sure they conformed. If they had done the architectural plans, they may have understood they didn't like the beam in the center of the room.
I'm objecting to that. There's no evidence in the record. There's no evidence in the record that they did something without a zoning permit and a building permit. The building inspector's here.
I didn't say they didn't get a building permit. I said they have a valid building permit. I went to the construction office. I reviewed the plans. I wanted to see the plans for the four dormers. They didn't have any available.
That doesn't mean they didn't do-
Steve, we're not in a quarter law. Would you let her talk?
I understand that.
Let her talk.
I understand.
You're going to get a chance to cross-examine.
So I wanted to see the ceiling height.
You can raise that one you-
I wanted to see what the concern was. I couldn't see that. I can't go into the building to see it, so I wanted to see it on the plans. I looked at the permit application. There's nothing on file showing what it looks like inside the building at this point, except for the picture that was submitted to you. Um, and that's at seven feet. Seven feet. My kitchen ceiling is a seven-foot ceiling. Now, that might bother Chris if he were in my kitchen cooking, uh, and when I wear my three-inch heels, it gets a little, you know, but it's, I, I live in an 1800 farmhouse. Low ceilings were prominent. Um, I would like higher ceilings. I can't have higher ceilings. It works. It functions. So my point is, the positive criteria they gave you is that it's because they're increased, they're improving the flood elevation, and that's a benefit to the community. Um, flood elevation is already improved. They had it designed so it would conform. They didn't like the design. They came back. They say that the second purpose that's advanced is there is a desired visual environment. That's a valid purpose of the act. But the original plans that were submitted were very similar to these plans, except they were 24 inches lower. They had the two dormers. They had the appropriate slope. That also promotes a desired visual environment and conforms. What it doesn't do is give them the headroom that they want. So again, this is an argument that this package benefits the entirety of the community. Reality, the variance benefits the property owner because they want more headroom in their bedroom space. And while they may have a right to want more headroom in the bedroom space, this area of the city is one that has lower homes. And it might only be de minimis in their minds, and it might only be 24 inches for a small portion of the property. But that 24 inches for that small portion of the property turns into 24 inches for the next guy who wants to come in. It becomes a, a continuing trend and change. This community in this area have lower heights in the, in building heights. Your master plan reflects that. Your master plan has discussed over time the need and the changes and the challenges in managing building heights. The master plan from 2006 strictly restricted the, the height to 28 feet, coming down from over a period of less than eight years prior to, or two years prior when it was 32 feet. So they continuously have reduced the height of the buildings in this area. That is an intent and purpose of your master plan, that while they have, want to go higher. When you look at the positives and you look at the negatives, the positive criteria, while they provided you two purposes of the act, are not advanced by this application. This is a self-created hardship. It is a specious argument that it is a benefit to the community when in effect it is a desire of the homeowner to have more headroom on their third floor. The negative criteria is not satisfied. The impairment to your zoning ordinance is paramount in your zoning plan. The, the, the city has made continuous efforts to limit and restrict height. They've even created strict slopes so that you're not going all the way up to 28 feet, but you have a pitch so that you have pitched roofs and you have barrier ceiling heights. Um, they didn't tell you to go ahead and do flat roofs up to 28 feet. They want pitched roofs if you're going up to 28 feet. So design is important, and that's embedded in your ordinance. The negative criteria is not satisfied. While it may not be visible to all of the neighbors, it is visible across the lagoon. There's a vacant lot directly opposite this property, so it's visible from the rest of the community as well. I believe they can conform to the ordinance. I believe that the positive criteria are not satisfied. I believe that the negative criteria are not satisfied when you look at the real intent and purpose of what they're trying to achieve here this evening.
I have several questions when you're done, Mr. Fessendekin. I'll be very brief.
I have nothing. Do you have anything else?
I, I believe I covered the key points. I wanted to stay focused on the rules that you're guided, that you're to be guided by, and how they are to be applied and why I didn't think they were applied. And I think as long as we stay focused on those issues, that's your role. That's what's important this evening.
Ms. Cuviello, let's focus on a couple other issues. Do you agree that if they didn't elevate the home at all, we wouldn't have to be here tonight for this variance? Yes or no? Second question.
No.
Yes or no? Okay, so you agree we wouldn't have to be here?
No, no, no. I agree. If you were putting a third story on and they didn't elevate the home, you would still measure 28 feet from the lowest floor, so you would still be here for this variance.
Why would we? We're only asking for 24 inches. We elevated more than two feet. Actually, two feet.
Because you measure, your, your building height is measured from the lowest finished floor elevation to the peak of the roof. If that lowest finished floor elevation is at 11 because you raised it, then it's 11 plus 28. If that lowest finished floor is where it existed, at nine, it's nine plus 28.
But actually, you looked at the elevation certificate, and therefore you know that it was under nine, wasn't it? Isn't it? Wasn't it?
Whatever the, my point is-
Are you aware of what the elevation was before they started?
Mr. Barnhart gave testimony as to what it was. It was around nine feet.
Are you around, are you aware of what it was?
No, I'm not.
Okay, so that you really can't answer that question, can you?
I can. I can say it's 28 feet from their lowest first floor. The number doesn't change because the elevation changes.
Okay, okay. You done? You don't know what the elevation was, correct?
No.
If you don't know what the elevation was, you cannot answer the question I posed.
That is not true.
It's not true. Suppose I told you it was 8.6.
Then they would be allowed 28 feet from 8.6.
And we wouldn't have to be here tonight, would we?
You were asking for 30 feet, so yes, you would.
We're asking for 30 feet?
You said tw- 24 inches over permitted.
We're asking, you know what the height is as it sits today? It's under height. It's under the height as we sit here today, is it not?
It's a conforming structure right now.
It's conforming. It's actually under 28 as we sit here today, is it not?
I, I have to look at your plans, but if you say so, it's under 28.
I say so, and that's what the plans say. You agree if we build a new home and demolish this home, we wouldn't have to be here this evening?
I didn't review the regulations in that regard, but that was a testimony provided by Mr. Barnhart, and I'm sure he is accurate in his statement.
Okay, because you say you reviewed all the ordinances and the master plan and everything.
As they pertain to this application.
I assume you'd be familiar with that.
As they pertain to the application.
Okay.
As they pertain to the application.
I don't have any further questions.
Okay. We have nothing further. Uh, just a brief summation, uh, of what the ordering is. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. White, do you have anything else?
Yeah, just a couple of second comments.
Sam, just for the record, Bart, we're going to, we're going to leave these boards here, correct?
Yeah.
Sam, can we mark these boards, uh, page three, four o'clock?
Yes.
I'll just put it right on there.
You've been here long enough already. I'll be as brief as I can. My wife and I have lived in this house for 30 years. Her parents built it 33 years ago. It's been in this family for a very, very long time. It's been in this family for a very, very long time. If you, if you're familiar with the, the lagoon, which I'm sure you all are, it's, there's no front and rear yard that really is in existence. It's really the rear yards. Everybody lives in the rear yards. The beauty of the homes are in the rear yards. That's where this is being built, in the rear yard. If you look carefully at those pictures, you'll see that even compliant, even compliant, it's an outlier, but I get that. It's a 28-foot height limitation, they're entitled to build what's up there right now. To exceed that by additional two, two feet only exacerbates the situation. It's really going to be a sore eye. It's gonna stand out like a sore thumb. I can't see any benefit to it from a, from a statewide, citywide zoning, public welfare purpose. It really only benefits the applicant. It pains me to be here. I'm not happy to object to anybody's variance application. I don't enjoy being here. It's not what I do, it's not what my wife wants to do. But, we've watched this thing unfold for over a year. It's been difficult to watch. We don't know what we're saying. We can't correlate things with plans. We can't correlate things with the zoning code. I'm getting inconsistent answers from people that I talk with. They're pouring concrete in the backyard, flagrant violation of the zoning code. It just goes on and on and on. We provide letters to the building department, we lay it out, we send copies of the building, of the concrete, we, we, we send a copy of the zoning code, which forbids concrete rear yards. It's a zoning problem. The water's gonna go to back, right into the lagoon, which is why they prohibit impervious coverage back there. My grandkids swim in that back bay. It's just too much. It's just too much. That's all. So, I figured, you know what? We're gonna have to spend some money, we're gonna have to get technical assistance. It's beyond me, okay, to understand some of these technical arguments. And we did. And we did. People that, that know what they're doing, acting good faith, have no, harboring no real will towards anybody. And what I concluded was, was that we're right and they're wrong. Okay? Now, that's my opinion. I get that. But, I only a, a, appear here after having given this a great deal of thought, because like I say, doesn't make me happy to be here. This whole notion of de minimis increase, this isn't de minimis. Look at what it looks like now, and it's compliant. Look at it. It dwarfs everything back there. Imagine it being increased yet another two feet. I mean, this is gonna stand out like a sore thumb. This height stuff, the city, you guys, you recommended that the zoning ordinance be reduced from 34 to 30 and then to 28, to grant them a height variance over that now. Contradicts your own recommendation to the, to the city. I get it, but that's why they have variances. Yeah, but you gotta prove the special circumstances in order to get a C2. I'm not gonna agree with what that means. You all know what it means. Probably better than me. There ain't no special circumstances here. It ain't gonna promote the public welfare. C2s are rooted in the public welfare, not the applicant. Sure, it benefits the applicant, but it's, your perspective has to be, how does it promote the purposes of zoning? And I'd like, I challenge every one of you to tell me how this promotes the purposes of zoning. Put that in your reasons when you, when you vote. Sorry to have taken up your time. Sorry to get emotional about it, but it's something that is obviously dear to our heart. This is our home, we've lived here for many, many, many years. Our neighbors are all concerned.
I object to that. I, I object to that.
And that's all I have to, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Weiss knows better. I, I ask that that be stricken, Mr. Chairman. His neighbors are all concerned.
Mr. Hankin represented the two clients that were not concerned, so if he can say it, we can certainly say it.
You can't say it because I represent him. That's why I said it.
Well, we have a letter here from the actual next-door neighbor.
It's not possible, is it?
Okay. Then neither is, neither is a representation, nor do I think it matters.
They're gonna, they'll sum, give their summation first, and then you finish.
I thought that was a summation.
No, I want a summary.
Well, I hope we're not gonna repeat that, so. I mean, I understand you're gonna summation, but your, your client-
This, this won't be long. I, I think what the board needs to focus on, you've heard a lot of testimony, you've heard a lot of conflicting testimony, you've heard a lot of opinions. Here's what you have. You have a homeowner who's not happy with a compliant four-gable-end structure. You have a homeowner that's not happy with a compliant two-gable-end structure. They now want higher ceilings in their master bedrooms, and they're gonna get that by asking for a height variance, which is gonna push the roof up. That's all they're getting out of this, is higher ceilings. It's not our fault, it's not your fault, it's not the public's fault, that this project was misdesigned. Actually, when I, when I say misdesigned, I'm referring to the four-gable-end system. That's, that's nobody's fault. The original submission, which was two-gable ends, was perfectly compliant. They weren't happy, though. They weren't happy, and they admitted that. The compliant construction, whether it be the four-gable or the two-gable, satisfies the same aesthetic purposes of zoning that the proposed construction will. This is not gonna look any different. It's not. So, why grant the variance? There's nothing more aesthetically pleasing by the proposed structure than there is with the existing structure, or the structure that almost existed before that, which was two-gable ends, under 28 feet. The compliant construction also secures everything above the first finished floor from, from flood. You get nothing more by adding on to this building to secure it from flood. It's the third story. If the first story is secured from flood by raising the building, the whole building is secured from flood by raising the building. It's that simple. You're not benefiting anyone by raising this structure, because the bottom portion of this structure is already secured from flood. There's absolutely no benefit to anyone other than the applicant in this application. The applicant's getting higher ceilings, everybody else is getting stuck with this gigantic structure that clearly does not fit into the character of this, this neighborhood, that clearly exceeds already as constructed, the height of every other structure, structure along the lagoon, and now you're asking to add two feet to that structure. We think it's too much. There's no purposes of zoning advanced, there's no benefit to anyone other than the applicant. They've created this problem. It's a self-created hardship. They've done nothing but come to this board and ask for a variance to fix their own problems. The applicant hasn't carried its burden, and this variance should be denied, because it has no basis whatsoever in law to be granted. We appreciate everybody's attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Briefly. As far as the benefits are concerned, the, the pull-in decision tells you to look at everything, not just what the height does. First of all, I didn't cross-examine Ms. Cuviala for, at length, for a number of reasons. The main reason being that you'll notice she never testified as to any negative effect on the objector. There's one objector here tonight, okay? Two people have, two of the neighbors have shown, one through me, one personally, no one objecting other than him. He, he can't see it, he can't feel it, he's not affected by it. There are community benefits. What Ms. Cuviala was saying, and I'm not gonna ask her her opinion, because her opinion to me on this issue is meaningless. She's saying that Margate's flood ordinances and FEMA elevation standards don't benefit the community as a whole. Well, two things are obvious. One, if, she didn't even know the elevation before we started, if we didn't, and this is a fact, and I disagree with her, if we didn't elevate the home and put the third story on, we'd be fine. And if we started anew, we'd still be fine, and didn't renovate. We're stuck with the structure the way it is, and we're allowed to. We're encouraged by the state, and Margate has its own ordinance saying, you can elevate. So, the fact that she, on the one hand, she admits it's compliant, the height, as we sit here, and then counsel's arguing, well, it, it's an eyesore, that it's so tall. Well, it's compliant. And it's not a self-created hardship. You know, this isn't like Ms. Cuviala's kitchen, where it's all seven feet. You got a higher ceiling, and then you walk in, and the effect of this thing is, it looks like it's gonna hit you in the head. The picture A1 is, is obvious. This is so minor. I mean, and the aesthetics, the aesthetics are versus what it was and what it is gonna look like today. The whole house, not just overall, we stipulate, Mr. Chairman members, you got builders and architects and construction code official here, you guys have been on this board for a long time. We stipulate that those knee walls aren't going higher. Now, if, they're not gonna go any higher, in any variance that we may need, and it's not to exceed 24 height and any other variance, if you grant this, and I do hope you, you will, please include in your resolution any other necessary variance that may be required, provided the knee walls remain the height that they are now. So, that all appeal, which I have no doubt will be fine.
I, I don't, I don't think you meant to say what you said, or I didn't understand what you said. We're not allowing any other variances that may come up.
No. But, what I'm saying is, in my opinion-
We can't put a resolution that any other variances that might come up.
Well, no.
That's your burden to do that, so I can't-
Yeah, well, I, I understand. In my opinion, there are no, I'm asking for your, essentially your interpretation. There are no other variances that are required.
Are you saying you're gonna comply with all the current rule, rules?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Absolutely. I mean, for him to stand up here and say, look at, oh, this is awful, listen, this is an unhappy neighbor, is what it is. There's absolutely no effect on anything with him, nothing. And if, trust me, my friend. Okay, whatever you say. That's good. You didn't appear unhappy up here either. Just my imagination. I guess I'm, do not, you know, whatever. Anyhow, having said that, I would appreciate the board, and, and this is not just a C2 variance, it's also a C1 variance, practical hardship, because the home existed and the third floor is being added. And so, it's not like they're asking for a 12-foot ceiling. It's not like they're asking for a 10-foot ceiling, they're asking for an 8-foot ceiling. That's all they're asking for. Been very patient.
Let, let me ask one question, though. Why is the floor six inches higher than it needed to be?
Floor?
The first floor is six inches higher than it needed to be. Was that a mistake?
I, I'm not, I can't answer that, Mr. Chairman. I, I know, I'm, I'm not-
Okay.
Sure I understand that.
I think the question might be referred to.
We can add about three inches higher than the dense floor and elevation level.
Whatever.
Still four. That's the whole.
I wasn't, obviously did not expect the instruct, the instruction, but typically with house raisings, you do end up with not an exact number, because you're, you know, you're elevating the house, you're doing the block, and, and, you know, sometimes you just end up a couple inches high. What contractors tend to error on being a little bit high, because if you're a little bit low, you're in big trouble.
John, that three inches then comes off the total height.
Yes.
So, the elevation from the building for 28 feet has to be at 11.
Whereas, we're 28.9 feet above 11.
Above 11. And we are actually under height, Mr. Collins, we're actually 20-
29.8.
27.
Right. Just to make sure the record is-
We're actually under 28 as-
29.8 above 11. I said it backwards.
What, just to clarify, John, what is the current height as we sit here? It's under 28. We're under, right, as we sit here today.
Right now, we're 27.8.
Yes, we're actually under, Mr. Collins, as we sit here today.
From 11.
Yes. Yes, that's correct. I've said enough, and you've been patient enough. Thank you. And just one other question, Steve. You, in the beginning, had offered a alternative to do a flat roof, where you wouldn't need a height variance. It seems to me that everything here is all about height, height, height. And we have in the past given pitch variances for flat roofs because of special circumstances. Would we be better not looking at that? I mean-
Well, can we hear from Mr. Fasenda?
We don't need to hear from him. That is just-
Well, if he's gonna object to it, I want to ask them-
No, wait a minute. Sorry. I asked them, when he was up there, specific questions-
Right.
About the flat roof, and he had an opportunity to answer that. He didn't.
Well, I wanna know if he would object to it. If he wouldn't object to it, we don't have a problem, so, go ahead.
I, I can honestly say I know nothing about the flat roof, other than it is a possibility. I don't know-
Does your client object to it?
I, I, I can't-
He's right there.
I can't ask him that question, if I don't know what it's going to look like, what it's gonna feel like, what it's, you know. I'm happy to ask him.
Well, you're, I think you're hurting yourself by not answering that question.
I will certainly ask him the question. No problem.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me, let me make this representation. I spoke to Mr. Fasenda this morning. He was a, as I said, he was a perfect gentleman, professional, and I tendered that offer to him this morning on the phone. I'm trying to satisfy the board here, and if Mr. Weiss would like to come up here, both of you-
Is it possible?
Would you come up here with me? And Dave, Steve?
I just don't know how it's going to be-
Would you be quiet for a minute?
Sure.
I love telling a lawyer that. I'm not an architect. If they made this roof flat from here to here, and this roof flat from here to here, that's what we're talking about. Would you object to that? And they don't have a height requirement here, but we do need to give them a variance because of the roof pitch. That's my question.
So, it would comply with a height requirement?
It would comply with height.
So, that would be, that would be under 28?
Yes.
28 or-
One person at a time, please. Jackie's trying to-
It's compliant.
No, 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 there's no roof pitch. You cannot have a flat roof.
They need a 512.
You need a 512 pitch, so you can object to that.
Oh, pitch.
My question was, would you object to that?
She wants to- She would like to give it some thought and discuss it with my wife-
Okay.
And, and my family, and look at a plan, Jackie. It's a little much. You guys don't have table.
I understand.
You do a shed roof across the whole front here, so it doesn't look-
It's more of a problem than something- I gotta see it.
This part of-
One moment, one moment.
One moment, one moment. We are going to take a five-minute break here, and we are going to discuss some things off the record with both attorneys. We are on a break right now. We have not been able to talk all at once like that and have the meeting recorded, so we're going to take a break. It may not... it may be longer than five minutes. I'm trying to get both of you to agree on something here, so it is not a problem.
We appreciate that.
The meeting is back in order.
Mr. Chairman, I'm standing here with counsel for the objector. We agree that, in lieu of what is proposed, that we have a flat roof, existing knee walls to remain the same height, and the flat roof is not to exceed the current height of the structure.
And the flat roof will go...
One flat roof.
One flat roof. Got it.
What's the current height? Is it... you mean 28 feet or less, or what it is now?
Whatever it is now.
So what is it right now?
What is it right now?
27.8.
27.8.
Do we agree with that? 27 feet, eight inches will not exceed. Flat roof.
Stephen, pitch the edge of that roof. Don't let it come out flat to the wall, so you see this.
Over the...
Yes, yes. Coming down.
So it looks like the rest of the roof's in the building.
I agree. It'll be lower.
No, it won't change the ceiling height.
Dave, it looks better.
As long as it's not higher. Right.
No.
That's all the board concerned.
It'll come up to the level.
It won't be higher. If it's an awning, it'll be lower. It'll drop at the edge. It won't be higher.
We stipulate the knee walls remain the same. It'll be 28... not to exceed... Not to exceed 28 feet...
27.
27 feet, eight inches, and...
And what's the knee wall height that you guys agree on?
Whatever it is now. I don't know. We can measure it. We're going to submit construction drawings. We're going to submit construction drawings...
Before any further work.
To Mr. Gallantino for approval for... and to Richard...
Keep Roger in his name. Oh, is that hard to remember? It's that Roger for 40 years.
I know, I'm new. I'm not new.
To Roger for zoning approval in accordance with...
Mr. Facenda and his experts will look at the plans, too.
Be our pleasure. We have no problem with that.
And that's before any further work.
Exactly.
But, we're going to do it right away. We're going to get drawings to show the height not to exceed 27 feet, eight inches. Flat roof.
27.8 feet.
Point eight.
It's existing.
Existing. And if they elect an awning, that's fine. If they don't, that's fine, too. One or the other. It's that simple. But the awning, obviously, will be...
More pleasing to the eye.
So tonight, we're going to then... you consent, the board's going to vote on the flat roof variance. They still have to approve the flat roof variance.
That's correct.
But you're not objecting to the flat roof variance with those conditions?
No, we're good.
Okay.
All right, let's go.
Of course, it has to be.
Yes, revise architectural...
But in accordance with this stipulation, yes. Okay, thank you. Are you done, Mr. Facenda? Sit down.
All right, well, let's button this up. We need to vote on the variance.
I know we do. I want to know if there's any further questions from the board, any comments from the board? Stan, would you try to put this together?
The applicant has amended the application from the C variance for height to C variance for roof pitch to a flat roof. And when 5/12 is the requirement, the stipulations are the flat roof in the area in question is going to be 27.8 feet. The knee walls will remain the same. Revised plans will be submitted that conform to this settlement and to all the other conditions that are in Roger's report that haven't been affected by this.
And so is the motion, the affirmative?
I'll... the pitched portion around the perimeter.
They... my understanding is they did not say they were going to do that.
My foot, Stephen did.
Mr. Wazleski had a question about the front being pitched down, and I thought there wasn't an agreement on that. Do you agree?
Steve?
Mr. Hankin?
Steve, can you come back to the microphone?
Mr. Hankin?
Steve?
Do you... Mr. Wazleski asked, was there an agreement as to the...
You will put an edge on the roof?
Edge on the roof?
A pet roof. They have to see it. My recommendation to them will be to do it for the reasons that Mr. Wazleski said, but we'd like to have the option, one way or the other. But I... it's good for wood to run off as well, as well as the look.
Certainly it is, but I'm thinking mostly aesthetics.
Aesthetics.
One of the original purposes of your application.
The board will make it a condition, so how about that?
Can I have a minute?
Yep.
One.
Hey, Stan. While we're... while they're talking, can I ask a couple questions? Because apparently there's going to be mechanisms in place for us to do an inspection with other people. So, would that be a condition that the building department and the zoning official go to the job site and verify these things are, in fact, as a plan or some type of document?
To measure the knee wall?
Yeah.
They're going to... they're going to... yes, we can do that.
That's good.
I would sign and seal as-built plans.
We have to go to the site and verify those plans.
I mean, you're going to have to go to this... would you normally go to the site anyway and make sure that they comply with what these conditions are? Right?
Normally, they submit the plan, then we go do an inspection to verify it.
Right.
Looks like we're going to have to go verify it to comply to the inspection.
Oh, I understand now.
Try to wrap it up.
We're fine with everything we would like.
We're going to have the city inspected to measure the heights of the walls.
As-built?
Right now. They're going to go measure it so the height stays the same.
That's fine.
So we have our own...
We would just like the opportunity to review the overhang plan before it gets built.
Agreed. Okay? Okay. Sorry. I apologize for the time. I really do. We got it. Thank you. Okay, so Stan, I'd like you to reread the motion.
Okay. The motion is going to be for approval from... for an amended request by the applicant from the original request of the C height variance to withdraw that and make a request for a C variance for roof pitch for a flat roof when 5/12 is required. The applicant and the parties and the objector have agreed to the current roof height, which they believe is 27.8 feet. The knee walls will remain the same. Revised plans will be submitted to conform to the settlement. Those revised plans shall be permitted to be inspected by the objector. The construction and other city officials will inspect the property now to verify the height of the knee walls and other conditions.
I'll make that motion.
And is there... and as to the overhang, that is agreed to?
You've agreed to look at the plans in conjunction with each other.
As part of the inspection of the revised plans.
Correct.
Okay? All right. Well, it's a motion and the affirmative for that variance for roof pitch and for all the conditions it set forth.
I'll make the motion. We approve the application. We're being specifications of...
A second.
Tom Collins?
Very long night, very difficult case. It's hard, very hard to discern the positives and the negatives in this case. I feel that the compromise accomplished is for the betterment and makes everything de minimis, and that it's going to end up with a nice project and probably happier neighbor, so I vote in favor.
Clem Wazleski?
Such can do about so little. Could have resolved it in 15 minutes. With the compromises, it works. It's going to be improvement to those four little gables, for sure. And I hope it makes the owners happy.
Was that a yes?
I'm wearing out. Steve, you did me a... yeah, I approve.
That was a yes.
Jim Gallantino?
That was a yes, right, Clem?
Approval was a yes.
Just verify. So, just to get the record straight, 27 foot, point eight will be the number we're going to be looking for when Roger and I go out to verify the as-built plan prior to them doing any work, to make sure that everything's in accordance to the agreement tonight.
That is correct. And to measure the knee wall height.
No, I believe we're measuring it to what the existing height is now, if it's 27.8, 6, 5, whatever. We want to verify what it is right now. And the knee wall right now.
And I'd like to make the date... the date with the lawyer, Mr. Hankin, sometime within the next week or two, so that we're not letting this go. Too long? Can we have a date?
I mean, just to measure... just to measure it, you don't have to do any work. That's what he means. Okay, so, that's what he meant. He didn't mean to inspect after the work's done in a week, right?
All right. And then the next thing will be two signed, sealed plans showing the changes that you're going to move forward with, and my vote will be a yes.
Margaret Ubernalti?
You know, it's funny, because we're still... we're still looking at the intent of the master plan, which I understand, and the purposes of zoning, and I listened to that for quite a while, and we're still challenging that. I'm glad the parties came to a compromise, and I vote in favor of the variance pitch of the roof.
Mike Crisstaldi?
I think the neighbor made a mistake. I think you're not going to be happy with the look of the house. I think you should have just got along with the neighbor and went with the architecture the way it was. I think we're making a mistake doing flat tops in the city. I'm totally against them. I'm in the building business, but I still have to approve this application. I just... but I think he's made a mistake. I... no, I vote yes for it, because they had to raise the house. If they didn't raise the house, they didn't need a variance.
Right.
So, you know, Sandy caused the problem, not... and we're thinking about raising our wood minutes to start with, so I'm fine with it.
Despina Hess?
Just have to regroup my thoughts. I was preparing to respond to the... to the height request, but essentially, quite frankly, regardless of your compromise, I still don't apply the standard to your new variance request to not adhere to the roof pitch requirement. I believe I didn't hear the exact numbers of the percentage of the roof. We talked about 5% of the height... or 5% of the roof that would not have been in compliance with the height requirement. Now, given this new flat roof that won't be in compliance with the pitch, I still understand that it's only going to be a portion of the roof. So while I'm against having flat roofs, given the fact that visually it appears it will only be a small portion of the roof, I'm not going to vote against the variance request. I will vote in favor of your new application, given the fact that it's only going to be a small portion of the rear roof that will be a flat pitch. So for those reasons, I vote in favor of the application.
Rich Patterson?
I agree completely with Mike and Despina. I misunderstood what Mike was saying. I would never vote for a flat roof, except in this case, it is because it is an existing house, and you're stuck with what you have, and you're saving an existing house. I am glad you compromised. My vote went back and forth throughout this, but I think this compromise works. I think the umbrella sides on that roof will make it look nicer. I think you'll understand that when you see it. So I vote yes.
The application passes seven to nothing. Steve, would you come sign, please?
Steve?
Steve, could you come sign, please?
Next case is Bruno and Catherine Dory. 600 and 602 North Huntington Avenue, Block 7, 10.02, Lot 9 and 56 in the S40 District to grant C variances. Please take it outside to grant C variances for front yard fence setback and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McQuarren?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. My report is dated... the original report was dated April 26, 2016. Revised report, September 20. Background: The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the City of Margate in order to construct a fence within the prevailing front yard setback along Huntington Avenue. The fence was originally located within the allowable setback and provided the 10-foot setback to be proposed to the proposed swimming pool. The opposite lot line along Bayside Court is curvilinear and was incorrectly shown on the original plans. This discovery occurred during the lot consolidation phase as required in the previous application, and it pushed the improvements further towards Huntington Avenue, thereby creating the need for a variance to maintain the desired pool setback to the fence. Also of note is that the installation of the public sidewalk necessitated a small portion of land to be dedicated as right-of-way to the city, which further pushed in the improvements. Therefore, the variance required is a fence setback along Huntington Avenue, where 16.1 feet is the prevailing front yard setback and 10-foot is proposed. No waivers are requested. My comments are as follows: The property line revision may justify the variance request on its own merit. The surveying error was unintentional and is insignificant in the overall impact to the property. My recommendations are: The variance is being sought, require testimony from the applicant to satisfy C1 and C2 criteria where appropriate and further on. All prior conditions remain in effect. I had no further report on this. I think it's a unfortunate situation, but technically they need a variance for something that was nobody's fault.
Thank you, Mr. McQuarren. My name is Chris Bayless, and I represent Bruno and Catherine Dory, the owners of Lot 9 and 56, Block 7, 10.02. I was here with the Dories in April, where it was shown that they had purchased the lot right next to them and proposed a variety of improvements, most of which were not a single-family home. It'll be a side yard now for the Dories with a pool, various outside accessory structures. We found out, as a condition of the approval late at night, it was requested that a sidewalk be constructed by the Dories within the Bayside Court frontage. I had made mention to the board that that would be difficult to do, because the property line on the Bayside Court frontage arced all the way out to the curb. So the sidewalk would essentially run across private property. At the same time, a survey discrepancy was also noted on that same property line, because the curve didn't match up with the endpoints. Difficult to tell which item drove the... drives this application. It could be the survey error. It very likely could be the location of the sidewalk. What the Dories have agreed to do, there is now an agreement with the city in place, should this board approve the setback variance, is an agreement in place with the city where 150-plus square feet of the Dory property will be conveyed to the city, allowing sufficient room along Bayside Court for sidewalk. The sidewalk will match up with the sidewalk next door, and as the board had wanted, you will now have continuous sidewalk right to the corner of Huntington Avenue through the exit of Bayside Court. That... Don, in his design, fortunately, was able to maintain a conforming status with respect to all the other improvements that the board, we spoke here of in April. Everything still conforms. However, when the large item, the pool, got slid toward Huntington Avenue to accommodate the sidewalk, that pushed it too close to the Huntington Avenue right-of-way. Wanting to maintain the 10-foot setback between the fence and the pool requires us to ask for a variance of 10 feet being the setback between the fence and the property line. So totally, you have 20 feet between the edge of the pool and the property line. The fence is right down the middle. Okay, so it's a... the variance is a request for 10 feet between the property line on Huntington and the fence. It's required to be 16.1. I think you'll find that the plan really hasn't changed from what you've approved, just the location of the fence. All of the landscaping remains. All that green space in here remains, but the location of the fence moves closer to Huntington Avenue.
Being on a corner, is that fence a solid fence, or that's an open fence?
That will be an open fence, from my understanding.
That's what I remember that from the prior meeting.
It's a picket fence. It terminates before there's any side triangle issues. It doesn't run across the entire property. It stops on the former... it stops within the former single-family home lot, doesn't go all the way to the house. And... And I think when you factor in the public safety now provided as a result of having that sidewalk to the corner, probably the most important place to have a sidewalk running to the corner, with the city having put a three-way stop at Lagoon Drive in Huntington several years ago because of the amount of traffic at that corner, now having sidewalk there just adds to public safety benefit, and I think that in and of itself would justify a fence variance of, it's still a nice setback, still 10 feet back, and you still have some right-of-way and some grass between the edge, between the edge of sidewalk and Huntington and the property line, so it actually looks like greater than 10 feet. Don can testify. Don, would you just confirm my story and my actual representation to the board, please?
My name is Donald Zachar. Yes, I do.
Donald, you and I have now worked on this since April to get this right, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
There will be a variance to the city-
Of 125 square feet.
For sidewalk. That coupled with the survey discrepancy will allow for sufficient room for a sidewalk along Bayside Court.
Correct, of 4 feet.
The Dorys are dedicating that land?
They are.
And paying for the installation of the sidewalk?
They are.
That, the relocation of property line necessitated, relocation of fence from 16 foot setback to 10, is that right?
That's correct.
And you believe the public safety justifies the variance request?
Yes, I do, yeah. You're welcome.
Any questions? Anyone here from the public? Mr. Silva, do you have an objection to this? Public portion is closed. Any other thing else on the board? Stan, would you read the motion?
It's a variance to, a C variance to change plans which were before the board, an application before the board previously, because of the plan, some errors in the plans and the sidewalk. So I believe the fence setback is required 16.1 feet, proposed 10 feet at this point in time? Am I correct? Okay. That's the only variance. All the conditions will remain the same. Anything not modified in the prior ordinance, I mean, prior resolution, will remain the same. So it's a motion to the affirmative for that.
With that motion, we approve the application.
I'll second.
Tom Collins?
I vote in favor of the application. I think the location of the fence is very de minimis, and I would just recite basically all the reasons I voted yes for it in the April 28 meeting would also be carried over to this.
Clem Waszleski?
This is strictly a technical variance based on a minor error in the survey. It's a no-brainer, I certainly vote to approve.
Jim Gallantino?
I see no reason not to vote yes for this application.
Margaret Huber-Nalty?
I vote in favor of the application for the same reasons Mr. Waszleski previously stated.
Mike Crystaldi?
Ditto. I vote approve.
Yes.
Despina Hess?
I vote in favor of the application. I believe in addition to my previous comments, the positives here greatly outweigh any negatives. It's one of the first times, I believe, the board can point to a tangible community benefit. The owner is actually conveying land to the city, financing and building a public sidewalk. It's going to be a great benefit to the community.
Thank you, Ms. Hatt.
Rich Patterson?
I also think the trade-off of having a sidewalk for granting this variance is another no-brainer. I vote yes.
Application passes seven to nothing. Chris, will you come sign, please?
Thank you, Chris.
I'm glad that, I'm glad that Don verified everything you testified to about the application. So I'm glad Don verified everything you testified. You were good as Don.
Are you guys going to do the settlement agreement for fences?
At the end. Yes. There will be a closed session.
Next case is Jim Silva, 116 North Decatur Avenue, block 326, lot 34.01, in the MF district to grant a C variance for building coverage and possibly others. Taxes and order are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McLaren?
I object to these drawings.
Pardon me?
I object to these drawings. I don't think they're prepared in accordance with the laws and the regulations of practice of architecture in the state of New Jersey. Stan?
The plans have been submitted by two individuals, but they're stamped by Edward Kelner. To answer Mr. Waszleski's question, his license number is 21A100777100. His license is active through July 31, 2017.
The title block does not read with his name. There's a signature of another party who does not appear to be a New Jersey licensed architect.
That is correct, Mr. Waszleski. There are two individuals who have signed, one of whom is not a licensed New Jersey architect, but the plans are actually stamped and sealed by Mr. Kelner.
In my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, Stan, you are. I don't believe they conform to-
All right, well, we're going to, my opinion is we'll let it proceed because it's stamped. I understand.
I respect Mr. Waszleski's opinion, absolutely. If they were stamped and sealed by two individuals, neither of whom are licensed in the state, but Mr. Kelner does maintain an active license at least through next year.
Okay.
I confirm that information myself, and I would expect anyone on the board to confirm, but that is his license number, and he's listed as active as of this evening.
Well, I'm sure someone on the board's going to confirm that, so.
I'm sure they will. Thank you, Mr. Burton.
All right, Mr. McLaren. Thank you, Board Chairman. I do believe I did confirm that the license was active and registered in New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
My report is dated originally July 26, 2016, and revised August 15, 2016. Background. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the City of Margate in order to construct a duplex in the multifamily zone. The lot currently is vacant, and the proposal will be identical to the two adjacent buildings. C variances are being installed for compliance with building coverage, which meets MF zone requirements, but not TF, or two-family zone requirements, as TF zone governs in this instance, because he's building a two-unit dwelling. Also, variances are being required for front yard landscaping. The zoning trial provided by the applicant is inadequate, below or under the city's calculations. The variance that is being requested is building coverage, whereas 32.5% is allowed for TF zoning, and 45% in multifamily zone for greater than three units, and 37.1% is proposed. And plus the landscape coverage, as I, front yard landscape coverage, as I mentioned previously. I don't know the number. It says it meets it.
It doesn't meet it.
Well, it meets 50%. What says variance not? Yeah, we're good to go. Okay.
I think he needs the information.
Yeah, I need him to confirm that. He said he complied, but I'm still coming up with something different. Okay. It was close. My comments are as follows. The site plan references a landscaping plan, but it is not included. Two street trees will be required. The trees may be removed beyond the sidewalk so as not to interfere with the overhead utilities, and a small governor strip. The governor strip shall be grassed. The site is within MF zone, but shall comply with TF zone standards due to two units being constructed. Applicants should provide testimonies to support the variances requested. Applicants shall also provide an existing survey with topographic information. There is a utility pole not shown on the site that will possibly interfere with the driveway. Applicants shall confirm location of driveway opening and utility pole. Street opening permits will be required. My recommendations are as followed, as you can see, but it reiterates my comments. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicant, Decatur Avenue Group LLC. With me this evening is Mr. Silva, who is an authorized representative of the applicant. Unfortunately, Mr. Kelner, the individual who prepared the plans, is ill. He is in Florida, but we believe, based upon Mr. McLaren's report, and based upon all of the other compliance that this lot has within the zone, that this variance can be granted tonight, based upon the testimony of Mr. Silva alone, along with what's been submitted. I discuss with Mr. Silva with regard to Mr. McLaren's comments. He will supply a landscape plan with regard to the remaining other seven comments. He will comply as well. So really, what we're here to discuss is the building coverage. It should be noted initially, although it's in Mr. McLaren's report, that the setbacks, the bulk variances, that were the bulk standards that are required in the zone, it's the MF zone, we're applying the TF zoning, are all met or exceeded by this specific application. And it's just the little less than 5% of building coverage that Mr. Silva's looking for, and coincidentally, he has constructed very appealing, similar, almost the exact same units on the adjoining lots, so I'm sure the board has been out to see what's been built there already. I'd like Mr. Silva to come up and be sworn in, please.
Ames F. Silva, Jr.
Pass the microphone back and forth, man. It's been a long night. Mr. Silva, you're an authorized representative of Decatur Avenue Group LLC, correct?
Correct.
And Decatur Avenue Group LLC is the owner of the property, correct?
That's correct.
And you are potentially looking to build two units on this site, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Would you describe, if you can, the units that you've built in the past, and then what you're doing on the site presently, and why we need the building coverage variance for a little less than 5%?
I built, 10 years ago, I built 112 North Decatur Avenue, two units, and 114 North Decatur Avenue, also two units. This building is identical to this, too. It's on the same exact lot.
And you've had architectural plans that were prepared, as we had indicated earlier, by a licensed architect, Mr. Ed Kelner, licensed in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Yes.
And those plans have been submitted to the city and to the planning board, and what I'd like to do, though, is if you could just hold up the plans here, to go through with regard to the coverage variance, why you are at 1,671 square feet versus the max of 1,462.8 square feet, okay? So what you're proposing to build here is identical to the other two projects you've built on the adjoining lots, correct?
That's correct.
While you're on that point, was the zoning to family when you built them, or was it multi-family at that time? Okay.
I'm sorry, again.
I was only able to purchase two lots at the time, and someone else had purchased the other, or I would have built all three. That lot became available till last March, and I purchased it.
Now, as you heard obviously earlier in the presentation, purposes of zoning, we have to satisfy both positive and negative criteria. You are a licensed builder in the state of New Jersey, correct?
That's correct.
And how long have you been a builder in New Jersey and as a builder throughout the course of your building career?
I started building in New Jersey in 1991. I've been building since 1969.
And you are licensed to build and to issue a new homeowner's warranty in the state of New Jersey?
That's correct.
And your license is current?
Correct.
So with regard to the plans themselves, what you propose to build is shown, would it be easier, I know everyone has plans in front of them, but we don't have it on a board, to hold it up or to just reference the plans we go through? Just describe what you intend to build here. A new flood-compliant duplex to be under the height allowance in the zone, along with the setbacks being complied with in their entirety.
The setbacks, front, rear, and sides comply. Each unit, well, the first, the front unit is a three-bedroom, two-car garage. The back unit is a four-bedroom with a two-car garage also. It's under the height required.
In your opinion, do you see any negatives associated with your understanding of the municipal land use law of the state of New Jersey, as well as the City of Margate's master plan?
No, not at all.
And in your opinion, as a professional builder, that's licensed in the state of New Jersey, do you think that the construction of this house, or these houses, the two-unit duplex, with the variance necessary for lot coverage is a positive, will have a positive impact on the lot itself, but also on the surrounding properties within the City of Margate?
Absolutely.
There are no experts to testify, aside from Mr. Silva, so unless the board has any further questions, that's pretty much it.
I have a question. Both cars are in the garage, correct? There's no parking pad in front?
There is, there is available parking spot.
There is a available parking spot in front? Not in the street, but in the?
Yes, there's, there's space in the front.
Okay.
Is that the case with the two existing houses now? Is that the case with the two existing houses now?
Your existing duplexes are built the same. Would it be fair to say that this is almost, I'm sorry, not almost, this is identical to what you've built already?
Correct.
And, Mr. Goldstein, there's no variances for setbacks? Everything else is compliant, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Burton.
So you're not getting any closer to any other property lines?
Yeah.
It's all conforming? Just happens to be a-
You know, it's interesting, because it's in the MF zone. It will comply in the MF zone, but by applying the TF standard, it doesn't comply, so that's really why we're here. And that was spelled out in Mr. McLaren's report, so.
It also meets the density requirements, so that's-
We'll need a, Roger, aren't we going to, isn't this in the ABFE zone, too? So it needs piling. Piling.
Mr. Gallantino? I'm sorry. Mr. Silva said he had the soil tested and does not-
It's in an area subject to wave?
It's in an area subject to wave action, Jim. You need piling.
I'll test it.
It's in an area subject to wave action. Doesn't matter. It's an area subject to wave action. Means that at any given point, there could be wave action. The FEMA made the rules up, not me.
You don't have a choice.
You don't have a choice. 2015 code.
It's required, it's required.
That's not a board requirement.
No, obviously. Can overturn FEMA, Mr. Patterson?
Pardon me?
You can't overrule a FEMA requirement?
I can do whatever. I'm going to give you 50 years, so peel it.
We are finished, subject to public comment. I believe there's an individual who would like to comment.
Okay. Is there any other questions from the board or comments? Anyone from the public like to speak? Mr. Weiss? Peter Weiss? 301 North Somerset Avenue in Venter. Yes, I do. So I'd like to ask, sorry? So I'd like to ask Mr. Silva, were these the same drawings you used 10 years ago?
Yes.
The exact same drawings?
Yes.
And who was the architect then? The guy in Florida?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd hope to speak with him tonight, but I guess he's not here. So my question really was, how some of my drawings, details on page A3, that were drawn by me sometime in the past, ended up on your drawings, and all the notes on sheet A4, and all the notes on sheet A5, were all copied from drawings I had done sometime in the past? Do you have any, were these on the drawings, were these on the same drawings 10 years ago? So you don't know if they were copied?
Kind of a cut and paste, so.
Well, I understand that. But it's my work.
I don't know where they came from.
Okay.
I have no idea.
So you don't know if they were copied recently or 10 years ago?
I don't, I don't know.
And I tried to find that out, but, you know, I couldn't locate the drawings at the building department. I couldn't locate- the drawings at the building department. I couldn't locate, I went to the building department to try to look up the old drawings, but they couldn't, they couldn't find them, so I couldn't find that out myself. So, you know, either I was plagiarized recently or 10 years ago, either way, but.
Pete, I'm sorry.
Pete, are you saying this is your handwriting?
All the notes are mine, yeah. I brought a cut, a sample of my notes. I mean, I've been using these notes for like 20 some odd years.
Page 3.
Pete, is there an enforcement aspect within your field that you can report to whoever this is, rather than?
Well, I just, I just think this goes to the integrity of the architect, and, and, you know, I just wish he was here to speak.
Okay.
And I guess at a certain point.
Which architect are we speaking about?
Well, whoever is taking responsibility, which I guess is the guy in Florida.
There's only one architect, Stan.
Well, the architect that is New Jersey licensed is the one that is responsible for this.
Yes, and this title block does not technically comply with any state law, because it doesn't have the contact information for the guy in Florida. It only has the contact information for the guy in New Jersey, who's not licensed in New Jer, in New Jersey, he's only licensed in Pennsylvania. So this is, at a certain level, is an illegal set of drawings, because it doesn't have the appropriate information on it.
I totally concur with that.
So that, no, you could probably reject it just on those terms.
I understand. All right, thank you.
I'm done. Sorry?
Are we getting a rule on all this?
Well, it has nothing to do with the application, what we have to approve, but it has everything to do with the fact that if somebody stole Peter Weiss's plans, there's a, there's an enforcement and legal action against whoever that is. That's up to him.
And I agree, Mr. Bergman. I'm not sure how Mr. Weiss's information would have made it to the plans, but this is not the forum. And if there is a correct forum, and it's just not before the board to flesh that out. I would be upset if I were him as well.
Probably Superior Court for damages against whoever submitted the plans, because they're using it. But that's up to Peter Weiss to figure out what that's going to be, but.
But there are rules and regulations.
And also, there's a title block. Sorry, Roger.
There are rules and regulations as whose name is in the title block, the address, the person that's named has to be in the title block, too. What's the title block, this?
It's obvious what happened here. Goes on regularly. Goes on regularly. Some older retired architects, myself excepted.
Excuse me?
Will sign and seal drawings prepared by another architect, which is in violation of NJSA 43, colon, 3-10, which Stan sent to me.
Well, but as to the application tonight, we have to vote on the application, you know. I don't necessarily, again, disagree with Mr. Wazleski saying, but I don't know, right now, what we've got in front of the board is a set of plans that references a New Jersey licensed architect. There's a name and address. I don't think Mr. Silva was involved in the preparation of the plans. I certainly wasn't, but the plans that are before the board are signed and sealed by an architect who's got a current New Jersey license, whether.
I'm assuming that if that's not correct, that this application's just going to be revoked at some point.
Mr. Bergman, I would not be.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's not your issue as an attorney for it, I mean.
But I think that, again, I'm just checking on my, my notes here. I did confirm, and I think Mr. McLarney also stated earlier, that the individual whose name is on the plans, one of the two, is active in New Jersey. He may be retired, he may not be as active as others, but.
I guess we can make a condition of approval, and that there be some type of?
Yeah, sure.
Proof provided that this person who is in the block is actually, because if not, I think we have a duty to report that person, or someone's going to report that person
Agree.
For that, as well as whatever Mr. Weiss's private action might be, I don't know, but that's nothing to do with me.
The extent that these plans are deemed improper because of Mr. Kellner not having a license, I would agree with you.
That's, that's what I meant, as to the condition, yeah.
But in the event that it's confirmed that he is licensed and is active, I think the board would be bound to accept the plans.
Well, how does this affect what we're doing right now?
The condition is that we can't accept pla, if they weren't really prepared by this person, then we have plans in front of us that we have, there's no, there's no.
But that would, that would be determined at a later times, which would overturn our decision. It doesn't affect our decision tonight, correct?
No, but what I said, we're going to make it a condition that there's proof provided that the person who submitted the plan is actually licensed in the state of New Jersey.
Well, he already checked his license.
All right.
We already did that.
But I'll do.
It's just a condition, so.
Yeah, and if it makes it any easier, although Mr. McLarney has it, I can certainly, I'll pull what I have from the state now and send a copy of that from the New Jersey.
That's what I would suggest you do. Our board engineer will verify that as a condition.
I'll send that over to Mr. McLarney, and to you, Mr. Bergman?
That's fine.
Yeah, good.
Stan, shouldn't that verification be that these plans were either prepared by him or under his direct supervision?
According to the statute, absolutely.
So if he wants to perjure himself with an affidavit like that, let him do so.
Sorry, I mean, that's just.
I get it, listen, I.
I mean, it's nothing to do with you, but it is a requirement, and it's, everybody knows it's, Marky is a requirement, so.
I would suspect that Mr. Silva can discuss with Mr. Kellner submission of his license, and we'll say that he stamped and sealed.
Well, if he's licensed in the state of New Jersey, he'll know that, he'll know that, what he has to do for that.
Yeah.
Statute, okay. All right, thank you.
Stan? Because I'm the guy that's got to finally sign these things. So the title block would be removed, the Bolton Associates architectural land, because he's not an architect in Jersey, he's an architect in Pennsylvania, so it'll have the Kellner guy and the title block, correct?
Bolton should not be mentioned over here at all.
Right, so all this is strict, strict from this document.
No, we're, we're, whoever prepares, whoever is on those plans, is the New Jer, that they're representing is the New Jersey licensed architect, has to verify under the statute. Mr. Goldstein's going to do it as a condition, that he's satisfied the statutory criteria.
That's fine. I just, I just don't want to have to chase a rabbit around the, you know, through.
No, they're gonna, you're not going to chase anyone, Jim, because they're going to have to show us that proof. So I don't want you to do that.
But we're not going to change, the, the plan itself will look the same, we're just going to provide?
Exactly.
The stamp, seal, showing who that was and.
Exactly.
And they prepared the plans.
That's, that's correct.
Well, let me ask a question of Clem. By signing these plans, he is stating that he prepared them, or it was under his direct supervision. He doesn't need to provide an affidavit, just by signing these plans, he's stating that, is that correct?
What he did was.
I'm not saying we did, I'm saying what it signifies.
I think he's aiding and abetting the illegal practice of architecture by the other side.
Well, I'm asking a question.
We don't know that.
Just by signing there, doesn't that automatically say that he prepared them, or it was prepared under his supervision?
Up to a point, but the title block and other documentation in here does not conform with the rules governing the practice of architecture. A non-architect in New Jersey, and this Bolton is not an architect in New Jersey, his name should not be on here at all.
There's two names on there. If his name was eliminated, would it meet the requirements, or it still doesn't have his address, or it wouldn't meet the requirements?
If the title block was changed for, what's the guy's name?
Ed Kellner.
Kellner. And that's the name that should be in the title block. If, in fact, he did prepare him, which I seriously doubt.
Well, I just want to make one clarification. I'm not 100% sure that's correct, Mr. Wazleski, because I think it goes on who actually seals the plans. So Mr. Kellner, I believe, is associated with Robert Bolton Associates, but Mr. Kellner was the one who actually did seal it. I mean, I'm feeling it now. I'm sure the board has signed sealed copies, signed by Mr. Bolton and by Mr. Kellner, but it's sealed by Mr. Kellner.
But he's signing and sealing someone else's plans.
I don't know. I think he's signing and sealing his own plans that just have his boss's name on it.
If they were his plans, they'd be his title block.
Well, not if he worked for the other company.
Say again?
Could be an employee.
Wouldn't it be the same title block if he was an employee of Bolton's office?
I mean, I think all the board, honestly, the board's interested for our purposes is that it's a licensed architect that's, that's doing this, whatever the private interest or the enforcement interest, I know that Mr. Weiss knows it, that's not up to the board, so we're going to move on at this point.
We accept that as a condition, however. Thanks, Eric.
Anything else?
Unless the board or anybody else has questions.
The applications for C variance relief for one variance building coverage. Requirement's 32.5%. Their proposal is 37.1%, 4.6% deviation, with the conditions that revised plans will be submitted conform with all the ordinance requirements, including front landscape, and that proof will be supplied by the New Jersey licensed architect that prepared and sealed the plans, that he, in fact, prepared these plans.
Right.
Is that fair?
Yeah, it's fair, okay.
I'll make a motion.
Tom Collins?
Notwithstanding the validity of the plans, this is very de minimis. It's only 200, a little over 200 some square feet of a variance in total building coverage, and all the other setbacks are met. I think the improvement without that lot there will be a very positive for the neighborhood. It'll finish the projects that Mr. Silva does, and he builds a nice quality project. And I don't see any negatives. Getting rid of a lot, we're getting a, a nice structure that's going to be FEMA compliant and improve the neighborhood's. I vote in favor.
Tom Wazleski?
For obvious reasons, I'm not going to participate in this vote.
He said no.
Jim Galantino?
How is that listed? Is that a recused?
That's a, no, it's an abstained.
Abstained. I don't see any problem with the plan, other than the title block needs to be changed. I can agree with Eric a little bit on it. I mean, it looks like, you know, it could be different, if two different architects worked on it, but hopefully they're all working in the same state. And I'm glad Pete stayed here three hours, listened to our argument to see if we did or didn't agree with this plan. But since it's a C variance for building coverage, there's really not a lot to detriment to the area, and I vote yes.
Margaret Gobernolte?
Based upon what was presented to us, I see no negative impact. It's a small building coverage, less than 5%. It's, it's an improvement to the neighborhood. I know nothing about architects' licenses. I know a lot about real estate licenses. I vote in favor of the application.
Mike Cristaldi?
I see no negatives from it. The two buildings are already there. It's going to be identical. We've got a bare lot there. I vote yes.
Despina Hess?
I also vote in favor of the application. I believe that the benefits here outweigh the negatives. I'd much rather see a slight overage in the TF zone as opposed to a three family unit, or three units. Vote in favor of the application.
Rich Patterson?
Regardless of the smallness of the, of the variance, I think just the fact that it, as, as differentiates from the last long case we had, this absolutely fits in the neighborhood. That's exactly what's there. It's filling out a weeded lot. I vote for yes.
Application passes six to nothing.
You're done now, Jim? Where are they? Oh, I lost my thing. Tom Collins has recused himself. The next case is Tom Collins, 18 West Collmar Circle, Block 509.04, Lot 71.01, in the S40 district, to grant a C variance for exceeding accessory structure allowed. Height of accessory structure and area of accessory structure being greater than permitted, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfying. Mr. McLarney?
Thank you, Board Chairman. Board members, my report is dated September 21st, 2016, for Tom Collins, 18 West Collmar Circle. It's in the S40 zone. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the City of Margate in order to construct a roofed, open pavilion in the rear yard as an accessory structure. As per the ordinance, there are restrictions as to the number of structures permitted on the property, area, and height. In addition to those variances, are variances required for landscape or vegetative coverage requirements for this property. The property, however, is an oversized lot, about two and a half times the required minimum size. I include the zoning schedule for your benefit, Board members. The variances required are as follows. Number of accessory structures, whereas two are permitted and three are proposed, one no and two existing. Area of accessory structure, whereas 80 square feet is permitted as a maximum, and 336 square feet is proposed. The height of accessory structure, whereas nine feet is permitted maximum and 12 feet is proposed. And the last variance required is landscape coverage or vegetative coverage, whereas 35% of the lot is required minimum and 31.6% is proposed. I point that variance out because the proposed pavilion covers some existing vegetative coverage and is making that worse. So it's not an existing, non-conforming issue. No waivers are requested. My comments are as follows. The property is an oversized lot as a result of lot consolidation. Applicants should consider moving the pavilion to, to cover existing impervious coverage instead of creating new impervious coverage. All runoff shall remain on the property and drain towards the street. My recommendations are typical for C1 and C2 criteria, where appropriate, with appropriate testimony, and everything else is standard boilerplate. I have no further comment on this application.
Good evening. Brian Callahan of the law firm, Callahan, Thompson, and Thompson, on behalf of Tom Collins. We've modified the plan that you have before you tonight based on Mr. McLarney's report. So the, what we've done is the accessory structure is no longer accessory. We've connected it to the building and made it a covered porch, which will eliminate the size and height, and we'll have it sloped down toward the back. So those two variances will go away. We still, and we've moved it, so it is, the covered porch is over the existing impervious coverage, so we're not going to be on top of any landscaped areas, et cetera. So the two variances that we believe that we still need, because it becomes a covered porch, it has a rear yard setback, will be five feet off the rear yard setback, so we would need a variance for that, and we would still need a landscape variance.
What, what is the required setback?
Well, the required setback in your rear yard is 18.23, which would be 20% of depth.
And you'll be five feet.
Five feet. If it was an accessory structure, there is no requirement.
Got it.
So by moving it, we were, our, the accessory structure was proposed to be 1.9 feet. We've now moved it, and we've sloped it. Landscaping, we have, the, the minimum in the front yard is 60%, we're at 73. The overall landscape is 35, and Mr. Barnhart will go to that because he did an exact measurement, to tell you exactly where we are on that, to go through it. So let me just call Mr. Barnhart, and he can walk you through the revised plan, so he can give it to you. John Barnhart?
I do.
Mr. Bergman, qualifications already approved, Mr. Barnhart?
Yes.
Chairman says yes, yes.
John, why don't you walk me through the dis项, and give them an idea of what we were proposing and what we're having tonight based upon the obligation?
Sure. The plan you have in front of you, and the plan that Roger's report is based upon, as you can see, was for the construction of an accessory structure, which was proposed to be 24 feet in length by 14 feet in width, and it essentially sat in the area that I'm highlighting on this plan, and it was less than two feet from the rear property line. That created, as you can see from Mr. McLarney's report, it created four variances. The one variance was for the total number of accessory structures. The second variance was for The second variance was for the size of the area of the accessory structure. The third variance was for the height of the accessory structure, and then the fourth variance was for landscape coverage, minimum landscape coverage required. After looking at the site, we inspected the site a number of times and receiving Mr. McLarnin's report, we talked to Mr. Collins about making a change that actually reduces the number of variances. We think it works well, still works well for his property, for his own enjoyment, and we think that it's less of an impact on the neighbors. So I think it's a betterment all the way around. So I'll explain that to you. So what we propose is to develop a structure which will still have no walls, it'll be open, it'll just be a covered porch essentially. It'll be a patio grade that will have posts, it'll be a covered porch that comes off the house. Currently, Mr. Collins has an exit from his home right here, so he'll be able to come down, stay in the... Under the cover and have that... It's now actually a 14 by 22 foot area that will have usable space that will be undercover. What that did is it moved the edge of that structure to be five feet off of that rear property line, whereas an accessory structure, we were proposing it, I think it was at 1.9. And then, obviously, because it becomes part of the attachment to the main building, it's no longer considered an accessory structure, so the height variance goes away, the accessory structure area variance goes away, the number of accessory structures on the lot goes away. So the only variances that we're left with are that rear yard setback that we just talked about.
What about house coverage?
An open... A covered porch, by definition, doesn't get counted in principal building coverage, so it doesn't affect the building coverage either. So what we looked at is we went out and made sure that we were right up to date with the existing landscape coverage on the lot. As the site sits right now, the existing landscape coverage is at 29 percent. And so what we're proposing as part of this application is this structure sits entirely... This proposed structure sits entirely on an area that as the surface is right now today does not count as landscaping. There's concrete area and then there's some stone area in that, in the area where we're proposing the structure, so it doesn't count as landscaping right now. So I think we've kind of met the intent of what Mr. McLarnin's report indicated, and that was to place it so that it is not increasing or, I'm sorry, reducing the landscape area. But what we're also proposing to do as part of this is to remove a paved walkway along the side of the building, and then the stone area that we had placed, or that Mr. Collins had placed adjacent to where we're proposing the structure to redevelop that as either lawn or landscape area. So what it would do is it would take the existing 29 percent landscape coverage that he's at now, and it would take it up to 31.8 percent. So the variance request would be for a 3.2 percent deviation from the landscape coverage required. We think it's clearly mitigated because anybody that's been by Mr. Collins' house knows when you drive by, you would have no idea that he would be... That he needs to ask for landscape coverage variance. The whole front of the property is landscaped very well. You've got nice lawn areas broken up into three different locations. There's mature trees on the front of the property. It is a large site. It looks like it's heavily landscaped when you drive across from the front of the property. The deviation really is all in the rear yard, and it's largely as a result of a pool deck. And that's kind of consistent. When people have pools, they want that space to be able to sit on patios around the pools. So that's really the deviation. So the community still has the benefit of a front yard that's landscaped in the way that it should be. This yard is... It has greater front yard landscaping than is required by the ordinance, so we think that that 3.2 percent deviation is very minor and can be justified because of the mitigating factor of the front.
Let me address that while you're talking about it and tell you what... It's a concrete jungle back there, and you've got no pervious place back there, and I think you can find places to come up with that extra 3 percent. That's my opinion. I'm just saying it because you just brought it up.
Understood.
Let me call first ballot roof.
Go ahead.
For the roof, not a flat roof, correct?
It's intended to be a shed style roof.
So at the rear of the property, it's not visible from the neighbor behind you?
Mr. Collins' intent is to have the roof by the time it gets to this point to be outward below the wall... There's a wall slash fence in the back that goes to a total height of eight feet.
Let's go back to Mr. Patterson for a second. At the rear of the property, 3 percent is about 300 square feet of coverage?
Correct.
Do we have 300 square feet of concrete to rip out?
I mean, obviously, concrete can be ripped out. I mean, I'm not saying it can't. You know, it just becomes a case of, is there really a benefit to it? I mean, you know, could you rip out concrete in the corner? Yeah, you certainly could, but it's an area that nobody has... Nobody gets to see it other than Mr. Collins. It doesn't create any aesthetic benefit. Obviously, it does, you know, it would slightly reduce runoff, but we're, you know, if you... From a runoff calculation standpoint, 300 square feet is a bucket of water. It's not a lot of water. So it's a case of you create a landscape area, there's no way to get the irrigation to it. It becomes an extreme hardship. I hate to use the word hardship because this is not a hardship situation, but it becomes extremely difficult to do, and I don't really see from a planning or technical perspective what the benefit of it really is. So that's why we arrived at two locations where we think there truly is a benefit. We're putting some landscaping back and some stone area that really doesn't need to be stone. We're removing a walkway that Mr. Collins rarely ever uses. There are areas that actually have benefit. By tearing out the back corner of concrete, we don't really see a benefit to it.
I don't have any other questions, Barnhart, I don't have anything more.
What would the roof pitch be?
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
The roof pitch for shed? Or I'm sorry.
How does the shed roof or the whatever it is you're adding relate to that second floor deck? It says second floor here. Do you have any photographs of the back of the house? Do you have any idea what this thing looks like?
I don't have... I don't have a photo with me.
He's gonna say on the area.
Clem, maybe this area that's second, that's labeled as second floor deck has... On the first floor, it's fully enclosed. It's just a deck on top of that space.
That's not the... It says second floor. I would read that as being open on the ground.
Yeah, it's not.
And solid on the top.
It's solid on... It's living... It's interior living space at the first level, and then there's a deck on the roof of it.
Well, then how does this... If you've got a shed here and the roof's coming up, what happens to this deck?
The intent is to start the shed roof here, and it would go along that existing structure. It would basically match the deck elevation here and keep getting lower as it goes by
When the roof of that... When that shed roof hits the back roof of the house?
Here.
Is that higher than railing of the deck?
No.
It's at the floor of the deck.
It's at the floor of the deck.
It's very hard to visualize.
Floor of the deck is, I would say, 12 feet above grade? Yeah. So the floor of the deck is approximately 12 feet above grade right now. So the deck... So that shed roof would tie into the house, the floor of the... And then it would be sloping down toward the back, so it would be even with the fiberglass decking here, and by the time you got here, it would be, I don't know, a couple feet below the...
The entire area of the roof is below the floor of the deck?
Entire area of the roof is below the floor of the deck, yes.
Are there any windows in that first floor area that are going to be blocked?
No, because it's completely open, so the poles do not block any of the windows. But to answer your question, there are two. There's a window on the first floor closed space that will still be there and will not have to be closed up at all.
Wish they had had some exterior drawings. It should make it a lot easier to understand.
Is this going to be like a shed roof off the back then?
Yes.
You need 110 inches in rise on the 22 feet.
Saying to make the 512?
I'm saying if you add 14 plus the eight back in is 22, gives me 110 inches on a five pitch roof.
Mike, I don't... I don't know if the 512 applies at the first level. Does it? The 512 roof pitch, isn't that only on the upper?
Yeah, I thought that was just on a...
Oh, that doesn't...
It applies to the front porch.
It doesn't apply? Okay.
This is about the first floor.
Because we're 22 feet across there now, roughly, along that, the pool side of the...
Yeah, the intent was not for...
22 feet, so it's going to be 22 feet by 24 feet.
I don't think the intent is for it to be a 512 pitch. If that's what you're...
No, no, no. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying with that, that one side run there now is 22 feet. 24 one way and 14 plus another back to the house.
You have 14 and approximately eight, 22 feet.
Yeah. Yeah. So we just really increase this thing almost another 30 percent.
Mike?
I'm not sure I'm following you.
In our ordinance, Schedule B1, minimum roof pitch five and 12 required for roofs above the first floor level.
Okay. So then that's good. If he could put a flat roof on there, it wouldn't matter.
Yeah, but he wouldn't want that. No, the intent is it would be, it's going to be approximately 12 where it ties to the house, and then roughly eight where it hits the end point.
But from the house out, it's 22 feet now.
From this point out to here.
It's 22 feet?
Correct.
And then 24 feet back the other way?
It's been reduced to, it's 22 feet this way now.
Okay, so it's 22.
So then it hits...
22 by 22?
So that it hits a point between... There's windows here, between the landing and the windows, so they hit between those two.
Any chance you could pull that in a little bit, off the 22, to give him more rear yard from the...
About this way?
Yeah. Just, you know, a couple feet. Still be a big patio.
Brian? How much extra feet does he have now than what the original proposal was? The 14 by 24 is 326, and he's got 528 now? Oh, less that corner.
Oh, square footage wise?
It's coming out steps.
Right.
And that's how we did it, is a covered patio. Now covering your steps and coming out the side.
Yeah, the usable space of it really is actually equal to or slightly less than was originally proposed, because when you come out of here, all it really does is give him, if he wants to sit out there on a rainy day, it gives him the ability to get out and stay under it without having to, you know, go out into the weather first.
That makes sense. But I mean, if he turned the table and he brought that bin from the back, the rear yard, could almost, you know, a little bit. I'm looking at the 22 foot run on that, on the pool side. If he can reduce that to like 20 feet, you know, you still got a 20 foot covered roof.
But you don't, though. You really only have about... If you cut this down, you'd only have about 12 feet there at that point.
So you'd only be 12 by 20.
Again, I can't stand here and argue that can't be done. It's just a case of...
But I mean, you're still going to be...
If it's two feet further, it doesn't really provide anybody a benefit. There's an eight foot wall back here.
But you're still going to be, you know, well over 20 feet. There's still a lot of coverage there.
Mr. Collins said 20 feet's fine.
There you go. Thank you, Tom. Now we got that backyard, you know, it's off the neighbors. That's... I'm good with that. Easier to build.
Any other questions? You...
Seven feet?
I'm sorry?
We're done.
It would be a seven foot rear yard setback then.
Can't give you any more landscaping.
That just gave us two feet to put landscaping along that patio.
You'll get... You actually will get a little bit more landscaping out of that.
Just turn to the other way.
All right, and no other questions? You're done?
We are.
I'm doing that. I'm trying to see who's here. Anyone here from the public like to speak? Public portion is closed. Any other questions or comments from the board? Stan?
The application is for C variances. It's been amended this evening to only ask for landscape area for the lot. Requirements 35 percent. As amended, it's 31.8 percent. Rear yard setback, 19.23. Feet is required. As amended, it's seven feet. I don't... The only conditions would be everything in Mr. McLarnin's report, as comments that haven't been satisfied. Is that okay, Mr. Callahan? I think you've satisfied all the conditions.
Revised plans are needed.
And revised plans being submitted.
Can I make a motion, may I approach?
I'll second it. I second. Thank you.
There you go. Good job.
Clem Mosleski?
I don't agree with John about not pulling up 300 square feet of concrete. If that was my swimming pool, I'd sure want some landscaping around it. But that notwithstanding, what is proposed now as opposed to what was first presented to us is so much better. I almost feel as if this might have been some kind of subterfuge to show us something we really wouldn't like and then show us something better, put us in a good mood. I think as presented now, it's a positive improvement certainly to this property, and I don't see it impinging at all on any of the neighbors. I vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
For C variance for landscaping and rear yard setback, that's the only two variances we have for this project. Tom, you've got to stop. That's it. No more. You're going to have to raise your house. It's on record. I approve this application.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
I'm in agreement with Mr. Mosleski again. It would look nicer with a little more landscaping, but you guys really worked it, and it looks good, and I approve of the application.
Mike Cristoldi?
Margaret took it from me. I agree with Clem. I approve the application.
Despinahess?
I vote in favor of the application. I believe that the benefits outweigh any potential negatives. It was nice to see an applicant take the comments and modify their requests. They knocked off, I believe it was three variance requests. The landscape was improved from where we started. I walk by the home, I live in the neighborhood, I'd say every day if not more, and the landscaping is beautiful in front. All you see is green. Certainly understand in the back, there's concrete, but again, the landscape coverage has been improved. There is significant mitigation as requested by the board, so for those reasons, I vote in favor of the application.
Joe DiGiorlamo?
Yes, the changes made from what it was definitely improve this particular application now. And I agree with Clem. A little more landscaping along the edge in that pool area probably would look really nice, but I'm going to vote for it as it stands now.
Rich Patterson?
It would be inappropriate to say that you should have us over for a pool party, so I won't say that. There's no accounting for taste, so I will... My purpose, nobody can see it from the street. My purpose was from your visitors so they wouldn't see that barren wasteland, but there's no accounting for taste, so I commend you on making the changes. I think it's very good what you've come up with. It's more... Looks more like part of the structure and not a giant outbuilding that would have been hard for the board to approve being three times the size that it should be, so I very gladly approve this application.
Patterson, when you come over for the pool party, please bring a potted plant.
I certainly will. That doesn't count towards landscape coverage.
Application passes seven to nothing.
And his is ugly. That's off the record. We have business? Yes. Do we have to go over this? I'll just read the memo. You just had to make a recommendation to go to council.
Maybe just Rogers, some...
It's really messed up. Yes, you did. This is on the record. Are we ready? Yes. Tom's got it. Mr. Chairman, Board members.